Council members, please take your seats.
I didn't see like, really.
It was early, I gotta say. Way too early.
Is there a motion to recess until after the council meeting?
So, second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. I now call this meeting the Cranston City Council to order. This time would ask everyone to please turn off their cellphones. Clerk, please take the roll.
Here.
Here.
Present.
Present.
Present. Is there a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the last meeting?
So moved, second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands as our nation, our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our public acknowledgements and commendations, a citation for Lindsay Radcliffe. Councilman Samaria? Councilman Samaria, please step up here. Councilman, Councilman Lanning, proceed. Thank you. Citation honoring Lindsay Radcliffe. Resolve that whereas Lindsay Radcliffe was a graduate of Cranston High School West, class of 2013, and is now a third-year undergraduate student studying biology in the Honors Program at Rhode Island College, and whereas throughout her three years of study, she has maintained a 3.9 grade point average, and has earned awards in both writing and biology from Rhode Island College, and whereas we have been conducting undergraduate, she has been conducting undergraduate research in the biological sciences since her freshman year, and is currently in the process of submitting a proposal for a departmental honors project under the direction of Professor Thomas H. Medel, Ph.D., and whereas she has been a recipient for the past three years of the Captain Walter T. Eckberg Scholarship, which provides hundreds of scholarships for children and grandchildren of CBs, and whereas she was chosen as the guest speaker, chosen from a field of other potential CB Memorial Scholarship Association this year, which meets annually in Washington, D.C., whereas it was her father, Richard Dennis Radcliffe, a disabled Navy reservist who served in the CBs, who was a motivation for her interest in medicine, and her CB can-do attitude toward life that has inspired her to help others. Now therefore, be resolved, City Council wishes to recognize and honor Ms. Lindsay Radcliffe for her accomplishment and achievement, to the extent that, their sincerest best wishes for her continued success in all her future endeavors. Ms. Radcliffe?
Thank you, City Council members and guests. I'd like to also take recognition, thank you to the veterans that are in this meeting It's really an honor to be distinguished by my hometown. I really want to bring the best to all of our veterans and their families by serving in the Navy. I will be applying to the University of Uniformed Services in Bethesda, Maryland, in order to apply to medical school and earn a commission through the Navy, and hoping to eventually work across the globe and then return back to Rhode Island to work at the Province Medical Center. Thank you very much.
Lindsay, you're an amazing young lady. Congratulations. Are there any other public acknowledgements or commendations?
I have none.
Public hearings. Any member of the public that would like to speak on any doctored item? You have four minutes. Please step forward, give your name and address for the record.
My name is Hugop Paroxian. I live at 17 Asia Street in Cranston. I'm here on behalf of all the disabled veterans who live in Cranston, 100% disabled veterans who live in Cranston. I speak on behalf of all my fellow veterans who are here, and those who are sick and cannot be here tonight, because they're unable to. I've been on the phone this week and spoke to some Vietnam veterans who were on their last leg with Agent Orange, so they can't be here either. But this is in regards to the bill that Mr. Akello introduced, and it's been amended, giving disabled veterans a 100% exemption. And I'd like to add to that bill, which was a $250,000 assessment, which, we all love that bill, and we hope that it passes, and we hope that all the council members here will approve it. I did get some more information. It was going to cost the city $348,000. But since you've brought it down to a $250,000 assessment, it's only cost the city less than $300,000. Comes to about $297,000. And you break that down over five years, it's, I think it's less than $60,000 a year. And you'd be doing a great service for the disabled veterans who are in Cranston with traumatic brain injury, with Agent Orange, with cancer, and all the other diseases that these young gentlemen and veterans got when they were in Iraq and Afghanistan. The Pitt fires, the oil lung fires, they all have a lung disease from that. So, on behalf of myself and all the veterans here, I just want to ask that you pass that resolution. Thank you.
Frank Sikosho?
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Attorney Frank Sikosho. I am the Assistant City Solicitor for the town of Johnston. I am also the President of the Rhode Island Second Amendment Coalition. I thank you for allowing me to speak in opposition to your resolution in support of House Bill 7243. Just so the council is aware, this bill, along with several others, was the subject of overwhelming, overwhelming opposition at the State House. Versions of this bill, last year, never made it out of committee. There is a watered-down version that we have here today, 7243. What this bill does is this bill tries to remove the exemption for concealed carry permit holders from going onto any school grounds in the state of Rhode Island. That exemption was put in place in 1990 by our Attorney General's Office. They believe that there should be exemptions for individuals, police, constables, sheriffs, Capitol Police, people who we trust to uphold the laws and to guard our buildings throughout Rhode Island, to be allowed to carry where, anywhere in the state, in accordance with Rhode Island general law. Their permits that they receive from either the Attorney General's Office or from our local cities and towns allow them to carry anywhere in the state of Rhode Island. This bill would remove only a small section of CCW holders. The amount of CCW holders is so small, I'd like to make sure that you, everyone on the council is aware of this. In Rhode Island, we have over 1 million people as residents in Rhode Island. Last year, Joey Limbeck from the Attorney General's Office came out to speak last session on this bill. The Attorney General's Office only has approximately 3,600 individuals licensed to carry to the Attorney General's Office, and through all the 39 cities and towns, there was approximately 100 active permit holders. So when you do the math, it's less than 4/10ths of 1%. These are law-abiding citizens, individuals who have been licensed, who have proficiencies, who have passed the licensing requirements from our Attorney General's Office and from our police chiefs. These are law-abiding citizens. These are people that you do not want to exclude. In the event that there's a problem, they can respond, they can be on the scene. Just last session, the legislature passed bills extending and granting authority to our Capitol, to our campus police, so that our campus police on our universities, junior colleges and colleges can carry concealed firearms. In the event there's a problem, they can respond immediately and with the appropriate amount of force. They also extended them authority so that they can aid in the local police departments in the event there's a problem. Our legislature is going forward to get rid of these gun-free zones, which are a dangerous and antiquated notion. This bill is a huge step back. Last session at the State House, when this bill came up, there were people that drove in from Connecticut, who said, who stated, "After Sandy Hook, most of the school departments there went away from the gun-free zones and started putting more and more armed police in the schools to protect our children." This bill, this resolution, is a huge step backwards, not forwards. This does not protect our children, it puts our children in jeopardy. If we take a look what's happening all around the world, such as in Paris, those individuals that were killed in that movie theater had no way to arm themselves. Had there been someone there with a concealed carry, maybe not that many people would have died. If anybody follows in any of what's happening in the gun-free zones, such as the individual who committed the Aurora movie theater shooting, he went past several other movie theaters that were in his area to go to the specific one where he committed all those crimes and all those murders. It's because that was the only movie theater in the area that was a gun-free zone. He knew there would be no opposition if he wanted to go there and commit these crimes. This bill is a huge step backwards. We should put, we, our children deserve better in our schools than trying to take, put this measure in place. Thank you for your time. If anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Tom Wardge?
Good evening, and to the council, and I appreciate the opportunity. I am speaking in favor of 7243. I'm speaking, first of all, as a grandparent. I also should let you know that I am a supporter and a member of the Rhode Island Coalition Against Gun Violence. From a grandparent's point of view, the thought of a person in the school carrying a concealed weapon, who doesn't even have to notify his authorities, such as the principal or anyone else, that there is a gun in the building, is quite frightening to me. The second point that I wanted to bring out is that I wouldn't even argue that most of your concealed weapon permit holders are law-abiding citizens. I don't even argue that point. But I wonder if you realize that, once you get that permit, that that permit is good for four years? That you can go four years without having to be retested? And, you know, quite frankly, I, early in my history, I worked in psychiatric and mental health services. My wife is a clinical social worker. There's a lot that can happen in four years from when you take that test. I wouldn't want to put my grandchildren's life in a situation where someone who could lose their job, or be in a domestic violence situation, and want to take revenge. People are emotional. People change. People do unpredictable things. It's also interesting that only, only the concealed weapon permit holders can carry a weapon. Why do we have regulation where no one else can carry weapons on school property, in courthouses, in airports? We don't allow concealed weapon holders to carry them in those situations. If it was such a security issue, such as we just heard, why wouldn't we allow concealed weapon holders to have free access in any public space? When I testified last year, I would take issue with overwhelming. I don't, I wouldn't characterize the bill not getting out because of overwhelming anti, I think it was, had to do with a lot of politics. None of the gun bills reached the floor. I don't think it had to do with overwhelming support, because as a member of the coalition, we are 87 members strong that belong to the coalition, which represent over 100,000 people in the state of Rhode Island, working for our member organizations. So I would say that, as a representative, that we also are pretty strong and have an overwhelming group of people in support of this. The other thing that I wanted to mention was that when I was giving the testimony, the person sitting aside from me to testify just before I did was, can't remember his name, but he was head of training for the state police, and he was against the bill. And the reason he was against the bill, he said, because basically the training that you have to do to get a concealed weapon permit didn't come close, and he would not want to have someone who only had that training to be put in an active shooter or an intense situation. That takes quite a bit of practice and training to be able to handle those situations. Currently, more accidents happen because of accidents of people carrying weapons, where the weapon is not supervised properly. A student or another person can get a hold of it. So more accidents happen, not because the school has an active shooter that's all of a sudden on the grounds, but happens because of irresponsible, normal kinds of human behavior. Not knowing whether there's a gun in the building is, creates an untenable situation for people. You'll also, recently, most of your school principals association, most of your school administrators, and your school teachers, the people who work in these buildings are against this. Can we not support the people who have to be in these buildings, who believe that this is the wrong thing to do? Who are we to tell them? We're not in there as a teacher, we're not in there as administrator. They do not want concealed weapon permit holders to have guns. There are, you know, a number of other points. There was a point made that now our, the people who have mental health problems are actively seeking gun-free zones. That's completely absurd. That is completely absurd statement. The person who went to that particular movie theater, went there because of the movie, not because it was a gun-free theater. That was the way he made his choice. So let's get real on some of this embellishment of things. They don't go looking. Typically, what happens in a school, what happened at Virginia Tech? There was a student there. It wasn't because it was a gun-free school, it's because the kid was upset about what was going on. And Sandy Hook, the kid lived in the community, was the only school right next to his house. He didn't pick it because it was a gun-free situation, or school, or zone. Those things don't stand up. They don't hold water. That's a red herring to get involved in that kind of craziness. So, just to repeat a few things, the, you know, the Rhode Island Education Leadership, Superintendent's Association, the Rhode Island Association of School Principals, the Rhode Island, Rhode Island Association School Committee, as well as 23 school committees supported this last year, and we're going to be on record to repeat that and increase that. Currently, Garrington Town Council has signed it. Three school districts, Providence, Lincoln, I think in Wintucket, already signed that they would not want this. Concealed carry is prohibited in K-12 schools in 39 states. The Law Center to Prevent Gun Violence, Guns in School Policy reported. It is far more likely that an accident will occur on school grounds with a concealed firearm, and any good may come from someone carrying a gun that is not sufficiently trained to handle active shooter situations. And from May '07 to February 15, 2015, in research involving 722 deaths and 544 concealed carry shootings, the vast majority of those killings were deemed non-self-defense, and only 16 cases were eventually ruled lawful self-defense. So I think we have, you know, the percentage of the concealed weapon holders is small. But I ask, when we talk about children, is any percentage worth the risk?
Excuse me. You exceeded your four minutes by about...
Thank you, I appreciate the opportunity.
All right, thank you. Dan Wall?
Sorry. Dan Wall, 27 Sagamore Road. I won't take much time tonight. Thank you to the members, Council President, and members of the council. Let me first by saying I'm grateful to Council President Lanning and the other members of the City Council for at least looking into this Ambrose Street issue with the sidewalks. I know last month, on the 26th, it was on the docket, and I also saw this evening it was on the docket. I first, I won't take much of your time, I'm sure I don't have to convince people in this room that safety of the students walking to and from school is very important. I first became aware of the issue at a PTA meeting. And after doing some research, this issue has been considered with a grant, a Safe Schools Grant, which I have looked into. There's a great deal of red tape, there's some finding information on it. I've been in contact with people at DOT as well. So I'm appreciative of the City Council doing whatever they can to look into this issue. If you look at Ambrose Street, it's a stretch in back of Western Hills that's approximately a quarter of a mile. And I've taken pictures, though I didn't supply any this evening, but the street itself, on the best days, is maybe a little more than two car roads. It doesn't really, it doesn't have sidewalks on it, and it doesn't leave a lot of room for students to travel. All right? In snowy, in snowy times, especially extreme snow, like we had last year, road gets narrow. And remember, this is a middle school. Kids are seven, eighth, and next year, we're going to have the sixth graders here. Any of you who are parents, family members, grandparents, no middle school students, I used to teach them, sometimes their attention span is, you know, not always, always perfect. So, to express concern, we have been lucky, I think, over the years, not to have an injury on that stretch of Ambrose Street. I'm not going to lie to you and tell you that every time I hear a snowstorm, now that it's on my radar, I think about it. That street's getting narrow, I know kids are walking down there, I know people are traveling, a lot of people are traveling back and forth on that street. It's in the morning, in rush in at work, sometimes people are even more distracted than they were at one time. So once again, I'll reiterate, I won't take much of the council's time, I appreciate you taking a look into this. Thank you.
Michael O'Neill?
Good evening, my name is Michael O'Neill. I am the Vice President of Rhode Island Second Amendment Coalition. I'm here to oppose your resolution for House Bill 7243 and Senate Bill 2761. Through the country, we have different situations going on, as California, the husband and wife ISIS, they went to a gun-free zone. Also, what's going around in the world, in Europe, we're having a lot of problems. There's no statistics that say a gun-free zone actually protects anyone. It does the exact opposite. In the United States, on an average, there's 2.5 million situations where a carry concealed permit holder actually saves lives. That's 2.5 million a year. Also, there's 12.5 million carry concealed permit holders in the country. There's also 118 million firearm owners in the country. The gentleman spoke earlier as far as training. I have a carry concealed permit. I also train once a month with a military instructor that has done multiple tours for our country, and it's all defensive drills. A carry concealed permit holder in Rhode Island, they take pride, they're ex-military. You know, they have fantastic backgrounds. We have NRA instructors, I'm an NRA instructor myself. There are actually teachers and principals that do carry in the state of Rhode Island. Now, in 25 years that this law has been in effect, we have not had any bad instances as far as a carry concealed permit holder in the state of Rhode Island. Now, Missouri just passed where K-12 principals and teachers can carry on school property. Last year, when I testified on this bill in the Senate, the gentleman that just spoke mentioned the state trooper that testified. It's kind of funny, because I was the first person, then the state trooper, and then the gentleman that just spoke. Now, I made a statement that, you know, with ISIS and how they're in the United States and how we're having problems, I said sooner or later, it will happen where it goes to school grounds. And he said, "After me, that'll never happen." Well, six months ago in Oregon, ISIS was on a college campus, and they killed, I think, 10 to 12 people, I'm not sure the number, I apologize for that. But it actually happens. This is the way our country's going. States are turning where they're actually, Texas has open carry for college campuses for their students and their faculty. States are taking the opposite of the gun-free zone and actually allowing citizens to protect themselves. Chicago, where there's 2,500 shootings a year, 500 people die a year. The Supreme Court in 2014 said, "You have to allow people to own firearms, protect themselves," because it was a gun-free zone. So this is, this is where gun-free zones do not work. On the FBI study, it covered 130 mass shootings over a 20-year span, and what ended up happening was, the situation was over before the police department got there because of, either he committed suicide, or he was shot. It's not that the police are taking a long time to get there, it's the problem that it goes in seconds, two, three minutes, and it's chaos, and by the time the police department gets to respond, it's already over. And the majority of them are gun-free zones. Now, the gentleman before me mentioned Aurora. He stated that he went to that theater because it was a gun-free zone. There's no, there's no mistaking about that possibility, that that's what he said. That he went to a gun-free zone. So I'd like you to consider that we protect our children instead of making them targets as far as having a gun-free zone in our schools. Thank you very much.
Susan Hodgkins? I'm sure I said your last name and your Susan Hodgkins. I'm sure I said your last name incorrectly, but you know who I'm talking about.
Hi. My name is Susan Hodgins. I live at 108 Betsy Williams Drive. Can I talk about two issues, or should I come back for the second one?
You have four minutes to talk on any issues that are...
All right. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm going to try to get to both issues. First is that I am in support of 7243. I have the unique perspective because I'm a teacher. I've taught, I taught for about 13 years in the Cranston school system, and I currently teach at an independent school in East Providence. And my concern, which I have discussed at length with people I work with, a lot of people I work with, are that anyone, everybody keeps talking about the rigid criteria for the concealed carry permits, but it's not just police who have those permits. Certain people, as we heard earlier, might not have been checked in a while. Those same people are not allowed to carry guns in airports or at the State House. Law enforcement in Rhode Island believes that this bill should be supported because they believe people should be trained to respond to panic events. A teacher, or an administrator, or a custodian could have a permit and bring a gun to school. And as we've heard, they're doing that. My question is, I hope they're not carrying the guns. As someone who works with kids, and I've taught grades, actually kindergarten through middle school, kids are curious. They hug you all the time. Guns on someone's body would be extremely dangerous. And so if you're trying to hide it somewhere in the school, we're all overcrowded. There's nowhere to hide things, there's nowhere to put anything. And little kids are curious. I'm sure we've all prepped our houses for toddlers to come in, and for children to be safe in your house. And yet, we're trying to maybe hide guns in schools. That's scary. I also have to say that in the many years that I've been teaching, that teachers, administrators, custodians, people get stressed by their jobs. We're all under enormous strain at certain times, and I love my colleagues, but every now and again, somebody might snap. And I think there's a big difference in snapping and going into the teacher's lounge and letting off steam by swearing or whatever you need to do, and having a gun nearby. And I would prefer not to have a gun nearby. The day after Calumbe, my students came in and asked me if I would take a bullet for them. And teachers are confronted with these issues a lot. The issue of guns is on kids' minds a lot. We're here as adults talking about it, but kids talk about it a lot. And kids, by and large, are really supportive of measures to control guns. I don't understand why Rhode Island is only one of 11 states in the, in the whole United States that thinks that this is a good idea. The second thing I wanted to mention tonight is a different issue, and I want to say that I'm a big supporter of a wage increase for part-time municipal employees. My understanding is that most of those part-time employees are library workers. Most of them are adults, not teenagers, and most of them are extremely knowledgeable and loyal to their jobs. I've been a patron at the William Hall Library for many, many years, and I know they don't get benefits, and it just seems like they deserve a real working wage so that they can continue to serve their communities. That's it. So thank you.
Anyone else from the public like to speak on any doctored item? Please come forward, give your name and address for the record, please.
Ed Garsh, Director of Libraries, 67 Callanman Road, Cranston. I'd like to speak briefly on two items tonight. The first is a resolution that is on your agenda for library state aid. Just wanted to give a little background about it. The state, the state law that governs library aid calls for 25% state aid for municipal appropriations, and we have not had 25% level of funding since 2008. The last several years, through several administrations, we've been level funded for state aid at 22%. This is statewide. This year, the Rhode Island Library Association and public libraries across the state are trying to lobby to get the aid replaced back to 25%, which would be an increase to the state budget of $1.4 million. For Cranston, that would mean an additional $95,000 in state aid in fiscal '17 for our public library system. Money we could use for buying new materials, increasing our hours at branch libraries, upgrading technology, a whole host of things. So we would ask that the council consider passing that resolution when it comes before you, to help in our efforts to get the additional state aid for libraries. Secondly, I'd like to speak briefly on the minimum wage ordinance. I know I spoke at the Finance Committee hearing about this as well. The Cranston Public Library Board of Trustees and myself agree that the part-time staff at the library have been underpaid for several years through a variety of reasons. And they all work really, really hard. They provide excellent customer service in all six of our locations to the public. And frankly, we could not run the library system without them. But we just wanted to impart on the council that, as you consider this, our current budget would need to be, for fiscal '16, would need a $65,000 increase in fiscal '17 to make the ordinance and the budget happen for us next year. So I'll be available for any questions that come up when you're discussing it, but just wanted to let you know those facts. Thank you.
Anybody else from the public like to speak on any doctored item?
Mr. President, council members. My name is Richard Plow. I'm a lifetime resident of the city of Cranston. I've had 63 plums through Cranston, Rhode Island. Retired with the state of Rhode Island as a deputy sheriff, over 20 years. I'm here on this bill for our veterans. Our veterans sitting here have been fighting for our country. They put their life on the line for our country. I'd like everybody to know that I used to work the cell block down in District Court. I've seen a lot of our veterans come through the system. There was no help for them there whatsoever. No pilgrims. Nobody there for them. Today, we're seeing help, they're getting the help they need. Not only physically, but mentally. If you see a person that's disabled, 100% disabled, doesn't normally mean he's disabled because he's physically disabled. Part of the time, it's mostly because he's mentally disabled. And they need this path for them. And their spouses need the help that they need. And these veterans gave the ultimate sacrifice for our country. I was in Vietnam in 1968, 1st Marine Division. I was medevaced out in 1969. I was on a hospital ship for a month and a half. Just a kid, who did I know? I wanted to fight for my country, and I put my life on the line for this country. I just want to say that, please, you gentlemen, with your heart, your grandfathers, your uncles, your grandchildren, just think of everything that's coming in this world today. We got to support our veterans. They gave the ultimate sacrifice for this country. So I expect you gentlemen to give them the, this bill passed as possible. Think about it, because this is a time here that they need it. And other states, other cities, and other towns, they haven't. If you gentlemen did some research on it, you would see that a lot of towns and cities and states haven't. So please, pass this bill for our veterans. Thank you very much.
Valerie Shulley, 27 Farm Street, Cranston, Rhode Island. I want to thank you for not only bringing up this bill for the veterans, but increasing it, and making it bigger and better, and passing it across the board. I'm sure in my heart that you're all going to do that, and I thank you for that in advance, because it is the right thing to do, and I'm so proud of all of you for doing that. And it may surprise some of you to know that I am a member of the NRA. And that probably doesn't surprise any of you. But I, you know, and I work in the school every day, every single day. There is nobody with a concealed weapon permit that is hiding their gun in the school. I'm sorry, that's just not going to happen. If you have a concealed weapon permit, you conceal it on your body. That's the whole purpose of it, not to hide it in the school. I don't understand that at all. Most of the problems come from not legal people carrying their guns, but illegal people. Not one of those guns in all those tragedies was from a concealed carry weapons person. They are illegal guns. What you have to do is something about the illegal people, which I have no clue how to guide you, or direct you, or tell you what to do. But as somebody in the school every day, I find comfort in the fact that there is maybe somebody there should something happen, especially after my Ellis training, that there may be somebody there that could come to the rescue or help with a proper training. And, you know, I have no problem whatsoever. And I am in the school every day. I know that the guns, that are the problems are the illegal guns. And I am old enough to be a grandparent, and I still say I have no problem. So I thank you for your time, and have a good night.
Jonathan Keith, 30 Lodge Street. I'm here in opposition of H. 2743. This has been a great debate, for and against it, but it doesn't, it doesn't belong here. This is the city of Cranston. This is a state bill. We shouldn't be disputing it here. This is a waste of tax dollars, and it's a waste of the city's time. Thank you.
Hi there. My name's Lisa Pagano. I live at 9 Everburn Drive in Cranston, Rhode Island. Gun violence is very personal to me. My family experienced great, great loss at the hands of a crazy person with a gun. My brother Jim Pagano was killed back in 2008. Took it upon myself to do whatever I could in his memory and his honor as a volunteer with the Rhode Island Coalition Against Gun Violence and Moms Demand Action. I've seen firsthand the wear and tear and the devastation that this kind of a situation can do on children and families. It is a lifelong trauma that lives with us, ongoing. And we are in a position to make some certain changes that are common sense, one of them being the resolution to ban concealed carry weapons in the schools. My son is 13, and having witnessed a murder, I mean, he's very sensitive to it, as I'm sure a lot of moms feel they don't want their kids exposed to this kind of a situation. And while we're concerned about the people with illegal guns, I don't think that anyone with a concealed carry permit with a regular gun on them is going to be able to take down a lunatic with an automatic weapon with, you know, many, many rounds of ammunition. I feel like the only people who should be taken those kinds of situations are police officers, people trained to fight that kind of crime. Last year, I put this resolution to ban the concealed carry in front of the school committee here in Cranston, and they overwhelmingly supported it. They don't feel as though they, it's safe for teachers and principals and guidance counselors and anybody to just be on school property with a concealed carry. If they don't want to have it in the schools, you know, I feel like we should be supporting them, and also our children, the safety of our children. I just don't think that putting a gun in the middle of a situation is going to make anybody feel safer. What I have learned is that putting a gun into a situation makes things much more dangerous, much more deadly. So if we take the guns out of the equation, you know, I feel like we're going to make everybody feel a little bit more secure and a little bit safer. And as a parent, I strongly hope that you guys, it's not a state, just a state issue, it's a Cranston issue. We start small, and we build up the coalition eventually to get to the General Assembly, and they'll hopefully make it a state ban. But I just wanted to say my piece on behalf of my family, on behalf of my child, and the Cranston school system, on behalf of the teachers and the principals, and the school committee who supported this last year. I hope you guys will take this under consideration this year as well. Thank you.
Anybody else from the public like to speak on any doctored item? Hearing none. Public session is now closed. Resolutions. Resolution memorializing the General Assembly to allow Cranston to grant further veterans' tax exemption, sponsored by the entire Cranston City Council. Motion made in second. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Passed unanimously. Next resolution. Resolution in support of House 7234 and Senate 2761. An Act Relating to Criminal Offenses: Weapons in Urging Passage, sponsored by Councilman Stychos. Councilman would like to speak on this?
Yes, I would. I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Motion in second for discussion. Under discussion. Councilman Stychos.
I sponsored this because this seems like a very, a very small step that we can take to make our society safer, to keep school, to keep guns out of schools except with the people who know how to use them in such situations, namely, police officers. The first gentleman who spoke said that the law, as it is now, allows someone like himself, who has a concealed weapon permit, to respond in an emergency. And I think that's one example of what we don't want to have happen. If there's some kind of horrible emergency with a shooting in a school, we don't want random people who happen to have concealed weapon permits showing up and starting to shoot. That just is a dangerous, dangerous situation. So we've had the, the school committee supported this last year. The Association of School Boards, the Association of Supervisors support this legislation. It keeps guns, except people, the police officers with guns, out of the schools, and reduces the chance of an accident in the schools. So I would urge you to support this, and I would say to the people who testified against it, that it's really time that there be some sensible steps taken to reduce gun violence in our society. And that the continued opposition to even something as tame as this proposal is really not helpful to our country, keeping our country as a whole. And I would say another measure that we ought to have is we ought to have universal background checks, so that you can't go to a gun show and buy a gun without a background check. And that, that's another one that there's objections to by the National Rifle Association. So I think this is a, a simple step that we can take, and I hope people will vote for the resolution, so that we can tell our legislators that this is an issue of importance to us.
Councilman Akado.
Thank you, Council President. To the chair of the sponsor. Councilman Stychos, do you have a permit to carry concealed weapon, or are you trained with any weapons?
No.
Have you ever been trained with a weapon? Have you ever shoot a gun at a target range? No?
No.
Okay. Thank you. President Lanning, this, this is a very sensitive resolution. Why wasn't this in the committee, where we could discuss it at length? This ever went to committee, correct?
No, it didn't.
I just have a couple of comments, general comments to make. First of all, I think all of us, as parents, or as uncles, aunts, grandparents, want our children to be safe in school. That's a given. Schools are very soft target. What I mean by a soft target is any college campus, any, any place of learning, there shouldn't be any guns. So any terrorist, or person who wants to commit some type of felony, the school's going to be probably one of the first places that person chooses. And there's statistically proven that there have been more shootings over the past several years on college campuses and in schools. I mean, Combine being, being the worst. And then you have to consider, what is the response time of the... And then you have to consider, what is the response time of the police to the school? Question here, very close. But in other states, police response time is going to be, there's going to be a lapse of time. And someone said in the audience, it's only a matter of minutes when things happen, as, when I wore a police badge, situations occur, and within 60 seconds, 180 seconds, that's when the worst of it transpires, more so before the police arrive. So prohibiting trained personnel from carrying concealed weapons on school grounds, it's, it's difficult, it's a difficult issue for me, because I am trained and expert maximal with a weapon, and, and, you know, and I'm sure there's other ex-state troopers, ex-sheriffs, constables, and I'd be very leery to prevent law-abiding citizens who know how to handle a weapon from carrying a sidearm. So I'm very hesitant, I'd like to recommit this to committee where we could discuss this.
Councilman Farina.
Thank you, Council President. I too have some hesitation on passing this tonight. I do have a concealed carry permit. I am a member of the NRA, I own guns lawfully, I am trained in how to fire guns, I've taken several classes in how to shoot them. Getting my concealed carry permit was very difficult. I had to go through an FBI background check, had to be fingerprinted, had to go through several steps to actually attain that background check, and prove that I was proficient with a weapon, to a score of 130, which a score of 130 may sound like it's not a lot, that means I had to get 10 targets right here. And I don't know if any of you can see how small this hole is on my chest, that's 10 shots right there. That's a person who knows how to fire a weapon. I was brought up with firearms, I respect firearms, I'm teaching my children to respect firearms. Law-abiding citizens don't create the problems, it's people who are not law-abiding citizens. I too would like to commit this to committee to talk about it in more detail. I'm very leery about taking away rights from conscious gun owners. If we want to talk about working to have the General Assembly pass laws to make gun ownership more, you know, to be more, more towards people who are abiding laws, to take people who potentially have had issues in their past, maybe psychological issues, if we want to talk about taking those people out of the rolls to, to have responsible gun ownership, I'm okay with talking about that. But to take away the rights from a gun owner and to assume that, you know, we're safe or less safe because some law-abiding citizen happens to have a gun in a school, I mean, these aren't the people who are causing the problem. I did some statistics today to look, I could not find one instance of a law-abiding citizen who was a responsible gun owner taking a gun to school and shooting someone. I could find a bunch that were unlawful people, people who owned guns illegally, or didn't have concealed carry permits, who were not trained. So I'm very leery in, in supporting this.
Councilman Botts.
I also agree with Councilman Farina and Councilman Arquette. You know, no one would want any of the acts that happened in Columbine, or Sandy Hook, or any of those places, but again, the, the people that committed these horrendous acts were not concealed carry permit holders. And you could play hypotheticals all day long, but I don't think there are going to be concealed carry permit holders flocking to the school when they hear there's something going on, trying to get in to do the police's job. What it is, if there happens to be a person there that has a concealed carry weapon, that might be able to do something in the event of a shooter inside of this place, might be able to do something. That is the crux of the situation. And as a parent of high school-aged kids and a child at college, if there is someone there that could actually end the situation faster than what it takes for the police to get there, I'm, I'm all in favor of that. And if there's a teacher that has to go through the process that Councilman Farina described, in order to get their concealed carry permit, and they are there, I, I am all for that as well. Again, it's, it's a stringent process to get the weapon, concealed carry permit. Again, you have to be sponsored, I believe, by your city or town's police chief, or by the Attorney General to get it. And again, four years, whether you have the permit or not, these other people didn't have these weapons for four years. They went out and got them right away, and was able to do the damage they did. So I'll be voting against this. I would be against committing this to committee, I think it should be voted down tonight. Thank you.
Vice President San Maria.
Thank you. Proceed. Julie, I don't think we can send this to committee anyway, it has no fiscal impact that I know of. Resolutions only go back to committee if they have a fiscal impact. If I'm correct, could I ask the parliamentarian on that? I believe it's in our rules. Can you?
I don't think that in order to be, to refer to committee requires a fiscal impact. Fiscal impact requires a separate statement, but I don't think there's a prohibition in the committee process undertaking a resolution if there's not a fiscal impact, or if there is, I don't think that would be requisite for committee referral.
Thank you. Councilman Vivekio.
Thank you, Council President. I took, I took a look at this resolution when we, we received it, and I also went on the website for this Violence Policy Center that's mentioned in the resolution, and I started to go state by state to see what they were really talking about, because they were talking about 700 deaths by concealed carry permit holders. So when I did, there was only one in Rhode Island, and sadly enough, I feel terrible about the poor lady that was, whose husband was, was killed by one of these people. However, that was the only one in the eight-year study that they did in Rhode Island, did not involve a school, and it was an ex-police man that, that we all, we all know the case, I won't even go into it, but, so that was Rhode Island. I went through the rest of New England, there was six in Massachusetts, a couple in Maine, none in Vermont, and only eight in the state of New York. I didn't have time to go through all 50 states, but not one of them was on campus of a school. All of them involved older, seemed to be older people, none of them were youth, were young people, they were mostly over 30, many of them were over 40 and 50, many domestic violence situations, so that's a story for a different issue. Bottom line is, the, the statistics and the data that they used just don't support what they're trying to say. None of these, none of these involved people on a high school, elementary school, or even a college campus, of the ones mentioned in this study. So I, I just don't see where, this is going to do anything. It may sound good, it feels good, maybe we're going to prevent something from happening, but I, I agree with Councilman Botts, Councilman Farina, Councilman Arquette, that these soft-target areas are exactly what terrorists are looking at, and even when crazy people decide to do something, they tend to find soft targets. They don't want to, they don't want to fight, they're bullies, they don't want to fight someone who's as strong or stronger to them. And we're also going to deny, how about a veteran who became a teacher, who might have been in the Marines, who's, you know, perfectly qualified to, to handle himself and maybe to protect the school and his, his students, we're going to deny him his First Amendment, Second Amendment rights, so that he, he could protect himself and a bunch of children. I don't think this is the, this is going to stop anything, and the good news is that we have had none of these in New England in the last eight years of this study, and evidently one of the gentlemen mentioned 25 years in Rhode Island, we've never, we've never seen anything happen. Now, obviously, we live in a dangerous world, a different world, but I don't think this resolution is going to solve the problem.
Councilman Peplockis.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. My daughter's in kindergarten, she's six years old, my son's in second grade, and every day when I drop them off to school, I pray to God that nothing bad would happen, as a school shooting, or, or something along those lines. So, if in the event that that would happen, I would hope somebody would be there with a concealed carry permit, and try and stop whatever event is going on before the police can get there. The police can't be everywhere, and, you know, it takes time for, sometimes for police to respond, you know. So, I, I would be, you know, against doing anything where it would take away the rights of a concealed carry holder. There is a lot that you have to go through to get it, and I'm not in support of this. Thank you.
Any other discussion? My comments are going to be fairly quick. I was in the service, I find, I'm an expert marksman when I left the service. Once I left the service, I never shot a gun again. I never owned a gun. I never want to own a gun. I think they're dangerous. However, I have grandchildren who go to school, and their lives are more important to me than my personal beliefs, so I'm going to vote against this also. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman President?
No.
Councilman Stychos?
Yes.
Councilman Botts?
No.
Councilman Asito?
No.
Councilman Alaba?
No.
Councilman Alaba?
No.
Councilman Alaba?
Yes.
Councilman Ray?
No.
Are there any other resolutions?
Yes.
No.
Yes, there are three resolutions listed to the General Assembly, sponsored by Councilman Vivekio.
Motion made in second, under discussion. Councilman Vivekio.
Thank you, Council President. This, just as a reminder, these, these are the bond issues that we're looking for for road, this first one is for road construction, obviously, we, we've discussed this, and we need to put this on the ballot to get the authorization. Doesn't mean we'll spend 20 million all at once, the typical, the administration, once it's authorized, comes when it has a specific project, and, and we do the, the bonds in phases. So that's the, the 20 million. Then there's the one for fire and safety apparatus, the second one, which is similar, we wouldn't be spending it immediately. And the third one is for public buildings, and that's the same thing, that's for 1 million. So those are the three bond-issue requests.
Okay, you see the bond-issue request from the administration. Councilman Asito.
Yeah, if Councilman Vivekio doesn't mind, I'd like to be put on board as a co-sponsor of all three.
I have no problem with that.
Councilman Farina.
I also would like to put on board a co-sponsor of all three.
Any other discussion? Councilman Stychos.
These resolutions have a fiscal impact, and they should go to the Finance Committee before we vote on them. I have no idea why these numbers were picked, I have no idea what the projects are for specifically, we have no idea how the administration selected these three areas to bond and not other areas. So we need a full, we need a full hearing of these, and I believe that Councilman San Maria pointed out, a resolution that has a fiscal impact needs to go to the Finance Committee, and I'd like a, a opinion of the parliamentarian on that.
Councilman Stychos, I'd like to address, these three resolutions are basically for, to memorialize the General Assembly, to enact legislation authorizing the city of Cranston to finance for these three areas. When one would be roads and the public works projects, the other would be, as you stated, public safety, specifically for the fire department, and for public buildings. What this is, is basically just putting it on the ballot during the election in November, and having the taxpayers approving it or disapproving it, and it becomes just the original authority. We are not going to be bonding for this. If we did decide, if it did, all three say get approved, and we didn't decide to bond, we would have to come before you with the amount that we wanted to bond, and what the projects were for to bond.
They could be, they could, it could be turned down at that point. There's nothing in the charter that requires that a resolution having a fiscal impact be referred to committee. In the council rules that discusses in Rule 34B, how and when a fiscal impact is attached, there's nothing specific.
Let me ask another question, then. Aren't these resolutions, don't these resolutions require unanimous consent in order to be considered without going to committee?
Thank you, Council President. Steve, I agree with you, the only issue we have with these kind of things is, we've got to get them up to the State House, so we can, if we do vote yes on them in committee, and then we have to send them back to council, we're running out, we run out of time. But I do agree with you, I think that for unanimous, for immediate consideration, it's unanimous vote, and I believe one dissenting vote automatically puts it into committee. But I would just ask you, that if we put it into committee, we're just cutting into the amount of time before we can get it up to the State House, so.
Councilman Stychos. Yes, I'm aware of that, but we have the budget coming up this coming month, in April, so we have a number of Finance Committee meetings, we could put them on one of those agendas, we could discuss them, and then we could have a, a special council meeting half an hour before another one of our Finance Committee meetings to decide on them. So I think we, we have the opportunity, and I think the administration needs to present these things in a, in a timely manner. We saw it with the audit, that it was at the last minute, we were accused of being political because we wanted a completed audit before we approved it. And as I, I agree with what Mr. Strom says, these are only putting it on the ballot for voters, but we just had a half an hour meeting about the ice rink. Maybe we think there should be a bond for the ice rink, that's a possibility. We don't, we don't know how these were picked as a priority, and we don't know where the numbers came from. So I'm, I can't say whether they're good projects or bad projects, because I don't even know what the projects are, are proposed that come up with these numbers. So I think we need a, we need a hearing, we need the administration to explain why they picked these three topics for this November ballot. Why isn't there a recreation bond? I don't know. Why isn't there an open space bond? I don't know. So that's what we need, that's what we need a hearing for.
Councilman Stychos. Basically, we, these three areas to bond and for authority were chosen because there is, after this year, there will be no money available to bond for public works and the roads. Number two, for the fire department, their bonding authority has now been consumed over the last, say, six to eight years. And public buildings, there was no money available there. Now, as far as Poxum Rec and other departments, they have bonding authority available, so that's why they weren't chosen. But all this is doing is basically, we had discussions with the fire chief, the public works director, and also the public works director for the public buildings, and basically, in order, we're trying to get our roads in the best condition possible, and we're going to try to be bonding more than we have in the past over, say, a four or five-year period for bonds at a greater amount. But without the authority, we can't even present it to you, what we want to bond for, and how much money to bond. and how much money to bond for. So the project for the 20 million was over a period, I believe, of four to five years. And that's what was recommended by the Public Works Director. As I stated with the fire chief, he recommended that amount for equipment and some of the renovations at the fire stations. And then, of course, the public buildings, some of them are in deplorable condition, specifically City Hall. So these are the reasons why there were no more, there was no more money available, and these were what was targeted based on the directors of those departments.
Thank you. Counselman Bots?
Thank you, Council President. Through the chair to Director Strom. I just have a couple of questions. The bond ratings right now, or the interest rates or whatever, are they very favorable to the city at this time?
Yes, they are.
So it would make sense to do that, well, if the voters approve it, it would make sense to go out and bond for these projects for the amounts that you're asking for?
Yes, but I just want to point out to you that this wouldn't, this would just be on the ballot in November. We probably wouldn't even present to you what bonding we would do till next spring.
And we're coming up on fiscal year '17 in this current budget cycle?
Yes.
And would this have any impact on fiscal year '17?
No.
No? All right, thank you.
Counselman Oseido?
Did we come up with a ruling through our, so is it?
There is nothing in the current council rules that requires unanimous consent on a resolution that has a fiscal impact that would require a resolution to be referred. I believe there may have been a rule in the older council rule protecting that, but I think that would be good two years ago.
For the record, I'm sure Counselman Arquetteau myself would love to get a hold of some of that afterwards to pay some of the roads and models that are on anyway, so I'm going to be voting for it.
Counselman Favickio?
Thank you, Council President. One of the things I wanted to say, we just did, I think, $3 million in road repair, which didn't cover much of anything in the city. So I don't think 20 million is an awful lot of money. Unfortunately, as we've learned in doing roads, over four to five years, it's not a lot of money technically to get the roads in shape in the city. And we know the condition of the roads, of the city roads, not to speak about the state roads, which are even worse, but, so I don't think that it's a tremendous amount of money. And I don't think you're going to get the specific projects now. It's far too soon. We're just trying to get this on the ballot, get it on the ballot, get some approval so we have some bonding authority, so that next year, when you get a lot of complaints on the roads deteriorating, we can, we'll have some money that we can go out to bond for.
Counselman Arquetteau? I'm sorry, Counselman Oseido?
Director Strom? How much money do we have left in bond authorization for roads approximately?
Currently, we have available cash of slightly under $2 million.
So once that money runs out, there's no authorization anyplace else?
That's correct.
To do any more roads?
That's correct.
All right. And we're still kind of, we're kind of close here, correct?
Well, we plan on going to do roads of about $2 million this year, and then next year, we're going to go out to bond.
All right, so now, we're going to go, if we go out to bond in November, and we authorize the $20 million in authority, that's not saying, again, I'll probably repeat myself, that we're going to spend that money in one year. It'll probably be a five, six-year project?
Yes, yeah. We try to spread it out, because the debt service would be too astronomical on any specific year.
Do you kind of have an idea on the budget? I mean, it hasn't been introduced yet or anything, on how much, we have that $2 million for roads, and that's it?
Yes.
But that's what's much it is?
Yes.
Counselman Stykos?
I'd like to know where the $20 million comes from. Why was it not $15 million or $30 million or?
It was based on a study that Public Works Director Ken Mason felt would be necessary to bring our roads up to a decent capacity.
So the plan is to spend how much a year?
We haven't really determined that yet, but I would venture to say would probably be about three to four million per year. It'd be double what we're doing now.
So why are we asking for 20 million if we need three or four million?
Because we just want.
Times two, or two election, until the next election?
Well, we just want the authority, so that if we, say in a specific year, you wanted to increase that to, say, $5 million, you would have the authority to do so. There's not a determined amount of how much we're going to draw every year or every two years. It just gives you the authority, because our concern.
I understand that gives you the authority. Don't let, explain that again. Thank you.
But if we don't do it, Counselman, we're not going to, and it has to be done during an election year, you're not going to have available resources to bond.
I also understand that. I'm not saying it shouldn't be done. I'm asking where the 20 million came from, and it sounds like it came from pretty much, you know, we need, we got a, we got a big problem, let's throw a big number at it.
I don't, I disagree with you. I believe Mr. Mason had a study done, and it stated how much money the city of Cranston would need to bring their roads up to a decent level.
I think you're correct about that. Do you remember the number that it would take?
No, I do not.
Okay, so we don't know where the 20 million comes from. What about the 4 million for the fire bond? What is that for?
That was based on our discussion with the fire chief and some of his associates of projects, and based on the capital budget going forward.
What projects? What capital needs?
I don't have that in front of me right now.
Okay, and you're the Finance Director, right?
I do.
Okay. The, well, how about the 1 million for City Hall, although it doesn't say City Hall?
It's public buildings in general.
All right, what, what's the 1 million?
Well, I know, I know we have to repair these bathrooms here, they're deplorable.
So you expect to spend $1 million on repairing the bathrooms?
Yeah. Hold on one second. I just got a, to rehabilitate, rehabilitate the City Hall public restrooms, it's $500,000. Roof replacement at Bonn Pool and Pump House, $100,000. Senior center HVAC, $120,000. Now, in a heavy duty.
Half, you said half a million dollars for the bathrooms?
Yes.
Wouldn't it be cheaper just to pay everybody, like, you know, $100 not to use them every time?
I'll take that, I'll tell my staff that, and we'll see what the response will be.
All right, I'm sorry, interrupt.
And they have to be ADA.
You had half a million for the bathrooms.
Yeah, they have to be ADA compliant as well.
And then you had, I've forgotten the other items. There was $100,000 for the pool building, the pool pump house.
Yeah. Yeah, a heavy-duty truck lift replacement, that's at the fleet maintenance garage. I believe that's used for the fire. That's $240,000. And the HVAC system is about $650,000. So there's only, I don't have all the breakdown. Our concern was to just put, get it on the ballot based on what the department heads felt was a reasonable number. When and if we do want to go out for any specific projects, then we'll be much more specific.
Well, first of all, I'd like to say that 99% of the time, when you appear before the council, you have your numbers, you're very straightforward, you give us straight answers, and I really appreciate that. And I think you're in the awkward position of explaining this, but it sounds like these numbers were just kind of pulled out of the air. You listed over $1 million of projects for public buildings, but we're only bonding for a million. You said that at most, we would spend, we probably would spend $2 million a year on roads, maybe five, and yet, we're bonding for 20.
No, we're not bonding.
We're, I'm sorry, we're asking authorization to go out to bond for 20 million.
Right.
And then we have kind of unknown requests from the fire department, and that, I just think that's, that's a shoddy presentation. And the administration ought to be able to do that if you're going to be asking us to go to voters and ask them to approve $25 million in borrowing. And I have no idea if the schools need any money. There's another issue. I don't know. Do they need, do they need bond?
The school, we've already gone, last year, if you recall, $15 million.
All right, so your feeling is that they don't need that?
They don't need it. We checked with the very other departments when we were doing this, and the three that we have before you are the only ones that were of necessity, necessity right now. So I think it's just, as I said, it's just enabling us to borrow. It doesn't mean what we're going to borrow, because as you know, from year to year, when you look at the capital budget, even though things are in a capital budget, they can change from year to year. Sometimes we skip projects, and we overlap them in the next year. So there's no, my concern is that if we don't do this, there'll be no authority for roads and for some of the equipment that's necessary at the fire department.
Okay, I'd like to just, at the risk of repeating myself, I'm not saying we shouldn't do it. I'm saying it should have an adequate hearing. Why, why is this coming to us with the rush stamp on it? Why wasn't this presented to us in January?
Two things. We had a discussion with the bond council who drew up this resolution, number one. Number two, it all, we had to have discussion with each department, see what their needs were, and we basically had a review of what was available and what was left in bonding that we had in our kitty, so to speak. So we're not, all we're doing is, you know, as I keep on repeating, we're just getting the authority. We're not bonding. It's not going to cost the city a nickel until we come before you and say, we want to bond for $4 million of roads. I mean, I can't say, and we've done this before, Counselman. This is not anything that's new this year.
All right, Counselman Bots?
Thank you, Council President. My phone doesn't ring off the hook as much, I think, well, three consuls does, but when it does ring, my main, my main concern from the constituents is the condition of the roads in Ward 2. And, you know, I have no issue approving this resolution for a $20 million bond. That would indicate to me, if it's a five-year plan, that means $4 million per year will be spent on roads. As Counselman Favickio alluded to, we did 3 million this past year, and it didn't make it, didn't seem to make it dead. So, you know, I think my voters in Ward 2 would be all over this, you know, that their roads, especially after the chop job that Providence Water did over the past two years, would be most in favor of this kind of legislation or, what am I trying to think of, resolution on the ballot? If you don't agree with the fire resolution, you can vote against that if you don't feel as though the documentation to back it up isn't there. And $1 million for public works, you know, I'd like, and again, once this does, if it's approved by the voters and it does go out to be bonded, it has to come back before the council anyway. We have to approve that, that money. So at that time, I think we could find out and nitpick whether these bathrooms are appropriate for a $500,000 repair or not. Maybe we could put meters on the doors, so we can get some of that money back. I mean, you know, who knows? But it's, I think these are worthwhile initiatives, and I think the voters would agree with that. So I'm voting in favor of these resolutions.
Counselman Oseido?
Through the chair, Counselman Stykos. While I see a point in that we just got the authorization this evening, but you and I have been through a bunch of budget cycles, as a lot of the other members of this council are, and I think that we have a pretty good track record that when it comes time to the capital budget, or any budget of any department, where, I mean, we're cutting pennies in some cases, and I think we do a great job of doing that. I see a point of perhaps being blindsided a little bit, but, you know, we got to get that up there, these resolutions up there, so at least we have the authority to do that. And then when the time comes, I'm sure, you know, you're going to be there, I'm sure I'm going to be there, I'm sure most of the council people on this council are going to be there, will do the right thing and decide, you know? And if it changes from year to year, like it changed, what year, Council President, where we had to go into the rainy day fund because it was raining, to help out, we did that. And, you know, that was an extraordinary circumstance. But I think it's really important that we move these along and get them up there and get the acting legislation for both houses to get it done.
Any other discussion? Hearing none? Oh, Counselman, I'm sorry, Counselman Farina?
Real quickly, I'm awful at letting the voters decide on this one. I think they're great projects. I'm approving them because we're giving the authorization to the city, based on their best estimates, what they think they'll need. We always vote on bond issues when they come back to us and have true fiscal impact. I'm more than comfortable putting these in the ballot like this. And Counselman Bots, I was actually thinking locks on the toilet seats. That way they can get in the bathroom, once they get in the stall, they actually have to pay. That's what I was leaning towards. May I put some credit card swipes in there? Just five minutes.
All right, any other discussion? Hearing, Counselman Oseido?
Counselman Farina, through the chair. That might be called to Providence, that might be next there with the 700 meters.
All right, you've talked yourselves out of this whole thing. Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
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 Yes. Report of committees, audience committee.
We have two more.
Motion to approve resolution memorializing.
Second. Second. Motion made, second. Any discussion? No discussion? Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Motion to approve resolution memorializing housing building fixing.
Second. Motion made, second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
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 Yes. All right, report of committees, audience committee chairman, Arquetteau.
Thank you, Council President. You have one, audience, audience 2-16-01, proposed audience amendment Title 10, code of city Cranston, 2005 type of vehicles and traffic, handicapped and disabled parking space, permit amended. Please pass it in as the committee.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion made to approve in a second. I need discussion on the motion. Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Finance committee chairman Stykos.
Thank you. We have several items. Before I go into the items on the agenda, I'd just like to say that we have set the schedule for the Finance Committee hearings on the budget, and make sure that there were changes at the last minute, so make sure you have the most recent one. And we did do a couple of things that are a little different. Anthony Anthony Moretti and I sat down and talked about this. One is that we put health insurance as an item to discuss, the citywide health insurance and the school department health insurance, rather than in each department. So, that will be, I believe, the first, when the school department comes in, we'll talk about that, and there's a night in which it's a separate item on the agenda for the, for a finance hearing. The other thing that we did was, we put that the parts of the capital budget that deal with the department will be considered on the same night. So, we'd ask that if you have questions about the proposed capital projects in the Parks and Recreation Department, that you bring those up with the Director of Parks and Recreation the night that he's here. And the purpose of that was that so these directors don't have to come out two nights, they only have to come out one night, unless, of course, they're the finance director, who's a regular. That was two things that we, we altered, that just keep an eye out for. I know also that the Director asks that if you have questions ahead of time, that you submit them as soon as possible to the Finance Department. I can think of one right off the top of my head that comes up every year, and that's how the Community Development Block Grant money is spent. And if we could get that for the, maybe the last three years, the most recent three years, and then we don't have to go round and round for half an hour with Mr. Story, that would, that would be very helpful. That one I can think of. So, anyway, those, did you have something you wanted to add?
If you, maybe Maria, you picked up on this, but I don't believe in your draft schedule, senior services was listed. It is now?
It is.
I didn't.
It's November 21st.
You sure?
Oh, first.
Because it was brought to my attention.
I think you're right. I think it was omitted in the first draft.
In the first draft, yeah.
Can you send me the final draft of that? I don't think I ever got that.
I haven't sent it out.
Oh, okay.
I understand. Location.
Because I only had the first draft, and I didn't see it, and I just wanted to make sure.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Alright, can I, should I go on to the items on the?
Yep.
Continue on.
Okay.
The first item is a, is establishing a minimum wage for city workers of $12, starting July 1st, and $12.50 on July 1st, 2017.
Motion to approve.
Motion made to approve. Is there a second? Second.
Second.
Under discussion. I'll go first. Councilman Farina.
Thank you, Council President. I'm going to say the same thing tonight, I said in committee, I don't disagree with this option. I just know that the budget is four days away, and in four days, we're going to see what the mayor budgeted. I just think it'd be more prudent to just wait four days, look at the budget, make sure we can find the $65,000. I'm sure we can, but, under the abundance of caution, I think since we start, literally start the budget in four days, maybe we should have thought about continuing this in the Finance Committee to one of the seven Finance Committee meetings we have next month. So, I'm going to vote against it.
Councilman Favecchio.
Thank you, Council President. I wasn't at that meeting, so I have a couple of questions. I guess, to, to the Chair, to the sponsor, I guess the fiscal impact was $65,000 in the first year, is that the?
I think the estimate was $70,000 from Mr. Strom, or slightly less than $70,000.
And, so we, so we just approved the veterans exemptions, and that's going to add $50,000 to our cost for this, no, it's not going to be following you. Got you. Okay. But, this was, this is $12 probably, and this came down from 15, is that, as I understand it? And, how will that, will that impact anyone else in the city? I know that there are other workers that may not make that much, you know, that work full-time, so I don't know.
No, the, the, what Mr. Strom told us was that if it had been $15, I believe there were two people it would have affected who were full-time workers, but with the amendment to $12, it would not affect any full-time worker.
But, what about people in, we have the school department as well. School department, we have janitors, we have, you know, aides, we have all kinds of different, different workers, who, you know, took years to get above that $12.50 level, so I'm just wondering if that's going to cause any problems with other labor, the labor unions in the city. I don't know if you, if you, I don't know if the administration has a position on that, on this, to the Chair.
Does the administration have a position on this? Questions being asked by Councilman Favecchio. Mr. Coop.
The administration does not support this ordinance for a couple of reasons. In addition to the fiscal impact, the, I'm not sure if there's any reasoning behind the $12 figure, but as has been pointed out, there are some part-time people who, over the years, have gradually seen increases in their hourly rate, who now might see someone who's been in a position for a much shorter time be equal to them overnight. And, it's, it's not, it's not necessarily fair to those employees, and it, and it doesn't take into account the position or the longevity of the employee.
Thank you. Councilman Botts.
Thank you, Council President. I just don't feel as though we should mandate a minimum wage for part-time employees. I think, while their service may be valuable to the city, they are part-time employees. Also, if we really want to do this, it should be in Budget Committee, rather than taking away any flexibility in future years if there's some sort of financial crisis that hits the city, well, we have a mandate here that we have to pay everyone a minimum wage of $12 an hour. Again, it's something that could be budgeted during the budget cycle. I would be voting against this.
Any other discussion? Councilman Santa Maria.
I also wasn't at the Finance Committee meeting. A question to the sponsor, to the sponsor. What are these employees getting paid now? Because I know that the state, minimum wage statewide is going up to 10, 10?
Most of them are paid 10, 10, but they're, they're kind of.
They're paying 10, 10 now?
Right.
Because that's not going to be effective till next January, so they're actually getting more now than they.
Yeah, some are at, the numbers are all over the place. There, there are some at, you know, 10.60, they're, so we went over that in committee, but most of them are at 10, 10.
Alright, and who approved the?
And it excludes, there are people who are below 10, 10, and this ordinance excludes students and the, the people who work at the pool in the summer, the students who work there, or the playground program, so it, it excludes them.
Alright. Yeah, and one other question. The committee vote was to drop it from 15 to 10, was that unanimous, or 15 to 12?
Yes, that was an amendment. It was unanimously approved.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else under discussion? Councilman Farina.
Yeah, one quick follow-up. The other reason in committee I didn't support it was because of the thing that Councilman Favecchio mentioned, that anyone who's currently making $12.50 an hour would be making the same as someone coming in right off the street as a part-timer. I would support something that actually gave a $2 raise to the entirety of the part-timers that fell in the class, to be fair, to the people that were already at the $12.50 rate that were making the minimum wage. It would have a more significant impact than $65,000, but for me, it would be fair to that person who did put in five, six, seven years to get the raises up to $12.50, to ensure that parity and fairness would prevail.
Mr. Strom?
I just want to point out that there are 15 people that currently make $12 an hour. I think that's someone mentioned, or asked about that. So, basically, they won't be getting a raise.
Based on how, how, what, 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 we, 35, 40?
No, these are part-timers, so it'll be 20. But, as Councilman Stikos mentioned, we have some that are at 11.55, 10 and 1/4, a lot of 10, 10s already, another 11.50, $11. So, there's a wide range of different, you know, it doesn't seem fair to the 15 that are currently making $12, not receiving any kind of increase.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Councilman Stikos.
Just to answer a couple of points. One is, Councilman Botts says we want to maintain the flexibility. We vote on contracts that are generally three-year contracts that lock in wages, and I've never heard the flexibility argument when somebody votes against a contract. So, that's what we do with the vast majority of employees, is we lock in their wages outside of the budget process. The second point about, about, oh, it's, it's not fair to the people who are $12, now they won't get a raise, but these other people will get a raise to $12. What's not fair is that, when you look at the numbers, the people in the library have been there for 10, 15 years, and they're at 10, 10. But, they get forgotten every year. They're the vast majority of the people who would benefit from this. And when the, when a person is hired part-time outside the library, they generally get more than $12. The vast majority of people who would benefit from this are in the library and in the Recreation Department. If someone is hired, say, in the tax collector's office, there's one part-time employee, that person makes $12.50 an hour. So, the fairness argument should be really that people who work many, many years at the library, 10, 12 years at the library, they get no benefits, no health insurance, no pension, and they get 10, 10 an hour. And the, one of the reasons they're at 10, 10 is the council raised them, put the money in one year to get them from, I believe, 8 to 8.50, or 8.50 to $9. So, we need to take care of those people because they get forgotten.
Councilman Favecchio.
Thank you, Council President. To the Chair, to Councilman Stikos. My only concern is that, you know, we, giving a certain group of people $2 raises may really draw the ire of some of the people who got, under those, the collective bargaining agreements, 40 cents a year over 10 years, and, and, you know, literally only went up $3 or $4 an hour over a length, a long period of time. It's, it's a substantial, you know, it's a substantial increase, and I know that, you know, something needs to be done. I just think that we need to audit these positions, audit all the positions, and see what impact it might have on other areas in the budget process in terms of the labor contracts that we have. I know we do three-year contracts, but, and some of those lock people into very slight increases and sometimes zero increases, and sometimes they'll, I think they've lost money over the last few years, in terms of the secretaries' union and a couple of other unions, where I think we're going to see people coming back and saying, "Hey, we're making less money because we're paying more medical insurance, and we got a raise, but we're, our paychecks are smaller than they were before we had this new agreement." So, I just, a little concerned about that. I agree with some of my colleagues that say we should do it in the budget process.
Councilman Osito.
To the Chair, but Councilman Favecchio, that's up there negotiated, to do better negotiations, if that's the case. I mean, it's give and take. I don't think these part-timers have a union, you know, to cover them and stand up for them. So, I mean, this is the first time that a council's attempted to stand up for these people who are part-timers, who indeed have been there years and years and years and years. That's the only difference. And the part with the school committee, I mean, let's worry about our house, the school committee does their contracts, then they come to us, and as long as the school committee could afford it, then we usually vote to move the contract on. I mean, I wouldn't be able to tell you one iota about what a secretary's contract is like, or what a janitor's contract is like, or whatever. I mean, I leave that expertise to the school department, who, you know, runs their own house there, so. But, I mean, I really think that nobody stood up for these people in a long, long time. I think it's the right thing to do, and if there's an issue on the other side, there's arbitration and other things that these people can work through to get better wages. That's all. Just a disagreement I have with.
Point of information.
Who, point of information? Go ahead.
Yeah, actually, Councilman Osito, not to correct you, but Councilman Stikos and I put through a, a raise in the budget process, not last year, but the year before, to make it, I believe, 9, 10, and then 10, 10. So, we did, year over year, actually do something to help them. But, we did it during the budget process, not creating the laws.
I stand corrected. Thank you.
Okay, point of information, is a question. Thank you for the statement. Councilman Arquero.
Thank you, Council President. I'm going to be supporting raises. I think there is no other work groups in our society that are exploited more than part-time employees, whether you be a substitute teacher, a part-timer, a library, or wherever. They're not a member, not members of a union, they have no healthcare, they have no retirement, they are working at the discretion of their superiors. So, with that, I give them kudos, and I think they deserve this raise. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. I'll make a final comment. I think they deserve a raise. I think we're acting like bikers. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Farina?
No.
Councilman Stikos?
Yes.
Councilman Botts?
No.
Councilman Farina?
Yes.
Councilman Favecchio?
No.
Councilman Favecchio?
No.
Councilman Favecchio?
Yes.
Yes. Passes 5-4.
Okay, the next item that was approved by the Finance Committee is the ordinance concerning the, the disabled veterans. I'm sorry.
Motion approved. Second.
Motion made, second. Any discussion on the motion? Council Vice President Santa Maria.
Thank you, Council President. We had put on our desk the proposed change from Sal Sakosha.
Through the Chair.
Yes.
I had emailed that out to the council last week. One is a housekeeping issue in terms of creating a new section for it, and the other one was a proposed amendment, which, I believe, two council people came back as wanting to include, which was extending the benefit to the veteran's widow. Those amendments would bring them to conformity with the resolution as it was passed this evening. We did have email, I did send that out in an email.
Okay, if I can continue, I just want to ask a question. So, the one that's on our docket now does not include the statement, "Which exemptions shall extend to the unmarried widow of such veteran?" Is that going to be a friendly amendment to the?
Yeah.
To the, yes, okay. So, do we make a motion?
I was going to make a motion to amend, based on Sal Sakosha's.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have one other question.
Alright, motion made to amend, and there's a second, under discussion. Councilman Favecchio.
Thank you, Council President. I have one question, to the Chair, to, I guess, the solicitor. It says that only one such exemption shall be granted to tenants in common. So, what happens in that situation? Because that's unusual. If it's a widow, normally, it would, the title would pass directly to the widow, whether it's jointly held or tenanted by the entirety, so I'm wondering.
Yeah, I think Mr. Sakosha's coming up, he's breaking inside question.
Is he?
Sal, you have the floor.
That's language that's normally in almost all of our exemptions, so that way, they don't, they don't double up. When it happened to pass away, and then the widow would be able to get it upon the, that the spouse or.
But, what, if they're tenants in, if the veteran is in.
Well, if it's tenants in common, it could be that there's two separate people, it's not husband and wife. It could be two brothers or.
So, would they get just one half of? So would they get just one half of the property would be exempt? Is that...
No, we tax the whole property, and only one person would be able to get the exemption.
But if they only own half the property?
We don't know.
The property gets the full exemption?
Yes.
Do we have any such situation?
No.
No, we've not, none right now, no. But I don't understand why it would inure to the benefit of someone who may not be a veteran and not a spouse.
I think it's just something that was taken from other exemptions that are on the... Whether it's a property or not, I can't say, but that's where the language was taken.
I would just recommend that the amendment exclude tenants in common, only because we obviously want to protect widows and widowers, as that case may be.
Council President?
Yes, Councilman.
Satisfied a minority leader's concern, could we delete all the words "in common" in the last sentence?
I'm sorry, "tenants in common."
Through the chair.
Yes.
Just for clarification, that language came out from committee, would not be part of tonight's amendment. The language that the tax assessor inserted is the one in italics, which states, "Which exemption shall extend to the unmarried widow of such veteran?" The remainder of that language came out of committee, was with the original ordinance. So if you wanted to remove that, you would need to make a motion to amend to remove it.
Through the chair. Oh. All right. So can we...
You could have a husband and wife own a property as tenants in common also. So...
I know that, but typically, that's not the case, where there's a husband and wife if they convey anything.
Point of order, Mr. President. If that's not part of the amendment, we shouldn't be discussing that section of the bill at this time. We should just make our comments germane to the amendment, and then later on, we can delete what we need to delete.
You're correct. Stick to the original amendment. Councilman Stychos.
Yeah, I'd like to just offer a... This use of the word... Or a question. The use of the word widow, I think Councilman Favecchio just said widow or widower. Obviously, now we have a lot of women in the service. We also have situations of gay and lesbians in the service who are married. How do we make sure that everybody is cugged? Unmarried surviving spouses.
Pa... 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 Asylas has a suggestion.
Instead of using the word widow, we might use unmarried surviving spouse.
There we go. Could I offer... I'd like to offer...
How about I just withdraw mine?
Unmarried. Unmarried surviving.
Withdraw my amendment, like Councilman Stychos made.
Go on, make second.
Okay. I'd like to add on line 33. I would like to add the words, "Which exemption shall extend to the..." Surviving spouse?
Unmarried surviving spouse.
Unmarried surviving spouse of such veteran.
Second.
All right. So can I read that back? Do you want to delete widow, or not put the word widow? You want to make it unmarried surviving spouse?
Yes.
Okay. So we just have to get rid of the word widow, okay?
Need a second on this amendment.
Second.
All right. Under discussion, Councilman Botts.
What's that? I'm not a lawyer, but is that an oxymoron? Because unmarried, doesn't spouse imply marriage?
Well, the term surviving spouse is used throughout the law, including in the Civil Security Act. So I think the unmarried piece is that the widow or surviving spouse is not remarried.
Okay.
Although we could say unre-married, because it's confusing.
No. If you were to pass away... Your husband passes away, and then you marry another veteran in the same situation, now would you be able to get two?
Okay.
And that's why they had that other language, where you could only...
All right. Just wanted to make sure we weren't restricting someone by using that terminology. So, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion on the amendment? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Council President?
Yes.
Council Stichos? Yes.
Yes.
Council Favecchio?
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 Yes.
Yes.
That's okay. Okay, now...
On the actual act.
Now, the bill has amended. Is there a motion to accept?
Motion approved. A bill has amended.
Second.
Okay. Under discussion, Councilman Botts and Councilman Stychos.
Thank you, Council President. I also have an amendment to the ordinance. I'd like to propose adding on line 29, after military disability rating, and then period, the following sentence. I'd like to add the language, "As of December 31, 2016." Reason... And I don't know, do I need to make that form a motion?
Second.
Thank you. For discussion. I think we're just late in the budget cycle here. Clearly, April 1st is coming up, and I think what we should do is phase this in clearly over the... As the ordinance says, but beginning in the next fiscal year to do this. I just think the impact may be adverse, given everyone's dotted their eyes across their t's on the budgets, so...
All right. Any discussion, Councilman Asido.
Yeah, through the chair. I think that would happen automatically, right? Because, I mean, this budget cycle ends, what, June 31st or whatever? We're getting close to it. I mean, I... There's no provisions to do it now, anyway. So it would have to be December 31st, effective December 31st.
Okay. Well...
Well... No?
Councilman Freina.
Yeah, under a budget of caution, because we're passing it tonight without the enabling legislation from the state yet.
I'll take that one.
This will give us the ability of not having someone come up and say, is it done? Is it done? We now have a date certain of December 31st this year to know that we can have everything done. I's dotted, T's crossed. That's the stopgap. That way, no one comes and asks for it now.
Councilman Santa... Councilman Stychos?
I don't understand the amendment. The... As I... Let me just tell you what I'm worried about, and then you can...
Okay.
I'm worried that something happens. Someone becomes 100% military disability... Gets a 100% military disability rating after December 31st, 2016. They won't be eligible.
No, no, no. This is coming after the period, so this isn't restricting someone. It's not like there's a grandfathering or anything like that. This is... Basically, the ordinance doesn't come in effect until December 31st, 2016.
Oh, I see. It's the first clause in the next sentence.
Yes. Yes. So it's basically ensuring it's in the next fiscal year.
Okay. My other question, I guess, would be for the... Mr. Quinlan, is where are... Since we don't have the... Whatever it's called, the authorization legislation from the General Assembly, do we... I mean, can we pass this first without that? Or is there any problem if then...
Well, I think you can pass it, but it could not be effective until the General Assembly approved it. And maybe the way to deal with both of these issues is to make the effective date December 31st, 2016, without making the prior amendment, and that way, we'd get beyond the General Assembly closure, and we'd also address that when their rating was.
We also address...
But when they had received their rating, as of December 31st issue. If it's clear that anyone who has a 100% disability rating after this ordinance is passed...
If you read it, it says, "Anyone who has a disability rating, period." Then it says, "As of December 31st, a tax assessor can." They're two separate statements.
I have a solution.
So they're not connected.
The city clerk just pointed out to me, Section 2. So Section 2, this ordinance shall take effect on its final adoption. City clerk suggested we put the December 31st date in Section 2. So the amendment, if... I don't know if... Do we need to withdraw that?
I think you'd have to withdraw the other amendment.
So I withdraw. I withdraw my amendment. Withdraw your second.
Withdraw my second.
Thank you. And I propose a new amendment on line 37. Section 2 should now read, "This ordinance shall take effect on December 31st, 2016."
Second.
Okay. Motion made, second on the amendment. Any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Council President?
Yes.
Council Stichos?
Yes.
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 Yes. Now we vote on the... Councilman Stychos?
Yes. Could we... I'd like to just add an amendment, a title. A title for this section recommended by the tax assessor. Section 3.21, real property tax exemption for qualified, totally disabled veterans.
Motion made, and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Council President?
Yes.
Second.
Yes.
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 Councilman Farina.
I just... We're going to talk about the ordinance as amended.
That's fine. All right.
Thank you, Council President. You know, I know when this came before, as Councilman Arquette started the ball, I've been talking with this Councilman Paplouskas for a while. I know Councilman Asido and I talked about it a couple of years ago. But I'd like to thank Councilman Arquette for taking the charge and leading with this, and then we, as a body, decided to increase it from the 50% it initially had to be, what's tantamount to 100% exemption, if you look at all the housing owned by current disabled veterans. The total mark will be about $270,000, and we're all said and done. After five years, it will exempt all the property. I'm hoping the General Assembly, with Councilman Asido's help, can get this passed for us this year, so we can get this started. I appreciate all the work the veterans have done for us. My brother is a veteran, no disability, but he served his country honorably, as did my stepfather. So I thank you for all your service, and hopefully, we can get this done for you.
Councilman Santa Maria.
I thank you. I echo Councilman Farina's... These guys went to war for us. They faced real bullets. We were talking about gun control. They faced real bullets for us. I think to be quibbling over any amount of money would be foolish. I think they deserved this tax exemption. I think it's our way of saying thank you for your service to our country. My dad was a veteran, served in the Korean War, so it wasn't easy for the families back home. You know, my dad was gone for two years. So I think this is well-deserved, and I wish we had done it earlier, but we want to do it now, so... Again, thank you for your service to our country.
Councilman Botts.
Thank you, Council President. I echo everything that's been said so far. And I would just like to add, I just can't think of a prouder moment of serving on this council than tonight. I mean, this is what being on the city council is all about, and that's helping the most in need. And I think these veterans that have gone over and sacrificed for their country, who are 100% disabled, are one of the most in need, so very proud of them tonight, and I'll definitely be voting yes on this. Thank you.
Councilman Paplouskas.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. First of all, thank you for your service, and I will definitely be supporting this tonight. Thank you for Councilman Arquette for putting this in, and I echo the statements of a lot of my colleagues. I also hope other cities and towns in the state of Rhode Island follow Cranston's lead, and also does more for the veterans, or does whatever they can do to help disabled veterans. So I'll be supporting this. Thank you.
All right. Well, Councilman Favecchio.
Thank you, Council President. I want to thank... Councilman Paplouskas had been discussing this for quite some time, so he was in tune with this quite a while ago, as was Councilman Arquette. And I received a few calls from veterans, some very elderly veterans, and I, you know, and I thanked them for doing it. They took the time to call, and they weren't... Some of them weren't able to make it. They were truly disabled physically and couldn't attend, but... And I think that it was, you know, nice of them to take the time to try to call council people and get this passed, and I'm proud to do this for them tonight. I think we're going to have more veterans come home with problems, and I think that we need to be doing something for them, so I'm in favor. Thanks.
Okay. Councilman Arquette.
Thank you, Council President. I'd just like to thank the veterans, the disabled veterans. Jake, being a neighbor and a friend, Jake was very persistent and filled me with a lot of statistics and a lot of information, and I appreciate that. I think all of us here, you're council member, in our little way, wants to help men who served in the military and lay their life on the line. I think our country, though, needs to address our active men. We're losing 22 a day in suicides, and our country needs to address the active men and the veterans, as we... These are dangerous times. We have... We're policing the world, and we need to make sure that the active men and the disabled veterans and our veterans get what they need. Thank you.
Councilman Asido.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. As the only active-duty veteran on this council, I know Council President Lanny was at the National Guard. I remember hearing the horror stories with guys who were serving on active duty, and you could tell that things were bothering them back then. Now, it's been a long time since I got out of the military, but it's probably only a little bit that we did, but thank you for your service, and anything else this council would do for you, we're a phone call away. Thank you again.
All right. Anybody else? I may say the last comment. That's why I'm the president. On behalf of everybody in this city council, it was unanimous vote, we all did the right thing. And I want to say to the veterans out there that we feel proud. We've done something right, as some of the council people have said earlier. We've done the right thing tonight. You guys deserve that exemption, and we're so proud of you. And then I look around, and I'm thinking back of the citation they gave earlier to Lindsay Rathburn. Her father's a disabled CB. So he's another person who got out of the service, married or remarried, got married, raised a beautiful daughter, and continues to serve his country through his efforts through the organization he belongs to. So once again, thank you all for your service. We're all very proud of all of us. Thank you. Moving on. We have to take the vote. Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Next is the resolution authorizing the real estate tax abatements as recommended by the tax assessor.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Next is the resolution authorizing motor vehicle tax abatements recommended by the tax assessor.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Next, the recommendation of the city treasurer to waive interest on overdue taxes in individual cases.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 And finally, at the Finance Committee, I was assured that as part of the budget process, the impact fees would be reviewed by the tax assessor and presented along with the budget. So there's no need for that item to be on the agenda any longer. And that's it for the Finance Committee.
Okay. Public Works Committee Chairman Asido.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. Resolution authorizing the abandonment of unnamed right-of-way between twenty-three ninety-eight, twenty-four oh-six Cranston Street. After two months of discussion, this, there was a positive recommendation that came out of committee.
There was? Wow. Is this what this is? Really?
Any discussion? Councilman Vecchio.
Thank you, Council President. Through the chair to Councilman Asido, what was the end result of that dispute?
That was supposed to be with the administration and them, so I don't know.
Does the administration have a position on this? Has it been resolved?
Spoke with Madam Clerk Wall. The parties have to come together and get a deed that the council can review and okay. And my understanding is, and I don't know, I think one of the neighbors is here now. And both neighbors are here. I don't know if they've come to an agreement yet or they've presented a deed.
Yeah, we're working on that now. Next meeting, resolve it.
I don't know if you would give permission to public hearing just so they could state for the record that they're discussing a resolution. The neighbors obviously have to agree first. That's the Council President. Mr. President, could they just speak to give us the status of their agreement?
Yes, I look forward to that.
You wanna identify yourself for the record?
Chair, twenty-three ninety-eight Cranston Street, John.
Jonathan Neer, twenty-four oh-six Cranston Street.
The properties between both our properties, we're working on coming to a resolution that's applicable to us. We'd like to present it to you next meeting. Should I put the unit up something wrong with the lawyer here present? You'd have to accept it.
Yes, as long as you have a mutual deed that you've agreed to and then the council can review it. I don't know if you wanna send it to committee again or you can just vote at that next council meeting. That's up to...
You can send it right to council, Mr. Council President. I don't think the commission...
Send it back to next city, one month from now, next city council meeting?
Yeah, absolutely.
Last Monday of the month.
And in the meantime, if you could, if you have it prepared, if you could bring it to my office or Mrs. Wall, okay? Thank you. You can send it to the legal department if you don't mind, here on the third floor. When it's done, thank you.
If that's what you review it to find out, so we, I know we're pretty busy. But sort of the last time, we can, next month.
Yes, Mr. President.
Hopefully.
Wall's in your court.
Thank you, Wall.
Thank you.
All right, move on to the Claims Committee.
Claims Committee, sorry, Council President. All right. Claims, we reported, we settled five or six, six claims during the last Monday. I think we got rid of all of the mailbox issues, so we...
Excuse me, I think we need a motion to continue that last resolution.
I think you're probably right.
That's correct. There was no vote taken on that.
Motion to continue the abandonment until next month's city council meeting.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye. Okay. Okay, I'll continue, Council President. Probably more like ten property damage claims. And those were all settled by the committee last Monday.
Okay. Moving on to Traffic Safety Commission. Vice President, Santa Maria.
Thank you, Council President. The Traffic Safety Commission met last Monday. There were two items that Council Majority Leader Arquette referred to us. The first being the resolution on Gladstone Street School. Director Barone was at the meeting. I think it's gonna be ongoing with Mr. Mulcady. Could I ask Director Barone, can you just verify that? We have here that it's further studies to be done by Public Works. And Mr. Mulcady is a member of Public Works, so that's where we're going with Gladstone Street. That's correct.
Yes, it is.
Okay. Is Councilman Arquette here?
Hi, I think he's, he's outside talking to veterans.
Can I, can I skip the second one and come back to it? I'd like him to be here for the second one. Okay, so I just prefer, I just like to reserve time to go back to that resolution. Thank you.
Okay.
So you're gonna do one of them or no?
I gotta do the Laurel Hill.
The second one is also the same situation.
Can we just go get him? This one?
Gonna put out an APB, Councilman missing in action. Is this, no, his seat's still here, his glasses?
Council, Council President, could I request a five-minute recess?
We're gonna take a five-minute recess. While we sit on our search party. Councilman, please take your seats. Councilman Santa Maria, Traffic Safety Committee.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. The Traffic Safety Commission met, I know I'm repeating this, but Councilman Arquette was, wasn't with us for a few minutes. The traffic safety report on Gladstone Street, Councilman, that you referred to us, we refer back to you through the administration because there has to be more studies done by Mr. Mulcady. So we put it back to the Public Works Department. So Director Barone was at the meeting. He's handling it on that issue. So I would guess that Director would, he reported, Mike, Steve B. reporting to, directly to you? And then you can report to Councilman Arquette or how do you wanna?
I would probably prefer to bring it back to the Traffic Safety Committee. And then as the chairman, you can make that decision as to how you wanna get back, get it back to the Councilman.
Okay, we've already referred it back to here, to him. So you could, you can...
Can I interrupt for a minute? But bottom line, this is going to Public Works. This is for the access to Gladstone School. So I hope we can iron something out prior to September. Because that's when you're gonna have a major situation is September.
We can't do anything until Mr. Mulcady does. We don't control the administration to Director. So the Director needs to have Mr. Mulcady get back to you, I would guess.
Fine, whatever. We need, we need some type of plan for access there.
Okay, if you can refer it back to Westport, we're just gonna, we've already vetted it in our committee. And we were told by the Director that it, Mr. Mulcady has to do more work on it.
Okay, fine.
So basically, he's gonna send me some type of plan?
I would guess.
Within eight weeks or so? Okay, thank you.
If I could just make a correction. If this is gonna be done by the schools, this is not controlled by the administration. So you need to understand that. I'm gonna work with them because I have their report from the police department. And Public Works has the ideas of the roofing and the signage. But as far, this all has to be done by the school department because it's the buses that are in question.
Could the administration send me the police report because I haven't seen it? Could you email me?
Did I send it to you? I did it, but I can't.
Yeah, please send that when you can. Thank you.
Thank you, Director.
You're welcome.
Also, resolution speed bumps on Laurel Hill Avenue. Councilman Arquette, the commission unanimously recommended no speed bumps needed in that area.
Could I have some type of documentation from the commission?
Sure.
A letter stating to that effect?
I will tell you that, I'm gonna tap out a little. I will tell you that there was a police voting member on the, a policeman who was a voting member and he voted against them also. I will get you, I will get you a quick letter which...
And the reason why it was denied? A letter saying, stating the reasons why speed bumps are denied.
Okay. Sure.
All right. And there's no hurry on that. You take your time.
Okay, because we're not meeting till May, so...
Oh, that's fine.
Okay.
You have that letter for me before May, you think?
Yeah, I'll have one done up.
A denial letter?
I'll have one done up by my secretary.
Okay, a denial letter, all right, thank you. Only so I can inform my constituents on what the commission...
Was able, get ready to start writing a letter for me.
And name names. Councilman Stychos.
Yes, on the Traffic Safety Commission, the, one of the meetings, DOT, Mr. Barone? Don't leave. There, there was a discussion in Norwood Avenue. And DOT said that they were going to hire a consultant. They hired a consultant. There was a walk-around on Norwood Avenue that the Public Works Director and Mr. Mulcady and I went on. I haven't heard anything.
Okay, I can answer that generally. At last Monday's meeting, Director Barone had not yet met with DOT. Did you meet with them between now? Director Barone did meet with them on a myriad of items. I would guess including that, the tips program availability for some of our hotspot roads. But I, he didn't have a report because he hadn't met with them yet. We're not meeting again till the third Monday in May because of the budget cycle. So we'll have a report. Unless you guys wanna get a report from him sooner than that, that's up to you as a council. So, but we won't get a report until the May meeting. So I don't know if that...
Put that in your...
I will. Do you need a letter from my secretary?
No, I can talk to you directly.
Okay. You all set?
I think so.
Okay. Public hearings, anybody from the public like to speak on any item? Docket or undocket?
Okay.
Okay. Where's Dick Tomlin's when you need him? Send him a gun? Election of city officials. Are there any election of city officials? None. Report of city officers. Update financial costs identified with the state police report. Mr. Moretti.
See a city... I was asked to update the report that was submitted, presented back on February eighteenth. Rather than duplicate everything that we've gone over before, I've just included the two summary pages that were a part of that report, being the impact by the subject matter. And then the second page is just looking at it a different way by expense type. The, to kind of be quick at this, first of all, let me thank Director Strom for providing me some information leading to this. He's been a busy guy between budgets and finishing up audits and that. And so, once again, I have to thank him. What has been updated has been the attorney fees in some of the cases in a legal claim. The, some of the legal bills that have come in involve the cases of Patalano, Josephson, Gilbo, and a police captain. Those bills amounted to twenty-two thousand, two-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars. So that amount was added from the prior report. And also, there was a legal claim that had developed regarding Captain Gilbo for, on the highest, on the high side, for one million, two-five-zero, zero, zero, zero. I'm sure the city is not admitting responsibility for that. So that doesn't mean it's going to happen. And if the city fully prevails, certainly be happy to take that number out of here. So the combined increase in the report on the highest end, if you will, was one million, two-seventy-two, two-seventy-five. On the lower end, without that claim, it was only twenty-two thousand, two-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars.
Any questions for Mr. Moretti? Councilman Vecchio.
Just a quick question. Mr. Moretti, you really didn't change much. You still left a state police, that six-hundred-thousand-dollar figure in there. Is that correct?
It's still there, correct.
It's still there. Even though it was determined it's zero cost, so you're just gonna leave it there?
The reason why it's in here is because the task was to quantify the cost, all the costs that were identified in the police report. It didn't say to the exact Cranston taxpayers. And Colonel O'Donnell represented these numbers as being a result of the police assessment and report, and that's why the numbers are in here.
But no one has to pay it, so we just gonna throw it in?
Colonel O'Donnell will say that those costs were incurred and people did pay for them. It didn't lie solely on the taxpayers of Cranston. Cranston was part of the total state budget that paid for those costs per Colonel O'Donnell.
But there was a contract saying it was zero cost. That was introduced at the meeting when you first did this. So despite that...
I'm not aware of that contract.
There was a part of the contract, I believe Mr. Coop testified to it, or Mr. Ross, that there was a contract that said it would be at zero cost to the city.
Can, if that's produced, I can take it out and re-present next month.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilman Arquette.
Thank you, Council President. Just be quick and to the point. So basically, Mr. Moretti was saying only mismanagement of the Cranston police force caused the city nine million, one-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand dollars, roughly.
It is saying that the issues identified by the state police accumulated into, potentially into that amount. In some cases, the amount could be higher, but in some cases, it could be less than that. You can see I drew a subtotal excluding the pending legal matters, the claims. If the claims are dismissed, then it's gonna be substantial savings, probably of about two million dollars. That's why I'm also representing a number less than that of seven million, one. But if the, if the offices prevail, there's exposure given their claims of the higher...
The worst scenario would be nine-point-one million dollars, correct? The worst scenario.
For all intent and purpose, yes.
Okay, thank you. Through the chair to the administration, Mr. Strom. Mr. Strom, does the two-seventeen budget see a tax increase for the citizens of Cranston? I know we're gonna see the budget April first, but I was wondering if the two-seventeen budget, has the mayor projected a tax increase?
I can't answer that right now. We're still crunching numbers. I will not...
You haven't completed the budget in the city council? You haven't completed the budget, and the city council's gonna get it on Friday.
That's correct.
So, no comment from your end? There's no comment?
I'm not commenting on any tax increase at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Shana Maria?
Thank you, to the auditor. In the report, the Gilbolt amount, does that include, I'm looking at the legal fees that have accumulated so far, does that include those totaling... Honestly, there's Adlak, Paul, and Sheen, and Blish, and Kavanaugh.
This report does include the legal fees for Gilbo. If you look to, while I identify Section 17 versus Karen Gilbo, you'll see $146,882. Those, if I recall, might be all the 100% legal fees, but that, if not, the vast majority of that would be the legal fees.
That's the hourly fees or cumulative?
These would be the outside legal costs that we're paying to our attorney to defend the case.
So far?
So far, yeah, through, through, uh, March 10th.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Moretti? I have one question for the administration. Mr. Moretti showing figures anywhere from $6 to $9 million, in a range. I heard the mayor and Councilman Farina and several other people say it's only $850,000. Can anybody give me a report where they came up with $850,000? A hard copy report, so we can compare it to Mr. Moretti's figures?
After the budget presentation for Friday, I will work on that for you.
Okay, thank you. Yes?
Mr. Moretti, I just wanted to be clear too, when you add, just so it's clear to everybody that on the second column at the bottom, on 16 and 17, when you go through the Josephson and Gilbolt claims, these are obviously numbers that the plaintiff's attorney has demanded. And there's just for a, kind of a term of art here, you aim for the stars when you meet a demand. So these are what the plaintiff would accept, but obviously, it's not necessarily what the cases are worth. This is the plaintiff's version, which totals over $2 million with the nine. Do you understand what I'm saying? You just took a letter, a self-serving plaintiff's letter, and added it up, correct?
That, that is correct, but I believe I did also say that if they prevail for their claim in that amount. But absolutely, I also mentioned it is possible that they will not prevail, in which case it'll be zero.
Correct, so it could be a little over $2 million, it could be absolutely nothing.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Ross, and that's why, in fact, I wanted to be, not show the worst, worst-case scenario, because you'll see total excluding pending matters. I intentionally put that there for that reason.
So it's actually, yeah, it ends up being almost half, it could go down to actually half of the nine?
Well, the numbers reported is about $5 million instead of $9,100,000.
Correct.
Councilman Shana Maria?
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Ross, and do you dispute line 16 and 17 and the legal fees spent so far? That would be more of a rally than accounting accusations, right?
I can't dispute those, but I will say that's not this year. You know, that, that goes back three, four, or five years. I think that's cumulative.
So, is that a yes or a no? You dispute them or you agree with them?
I have to look them up, but I, I have no reason to dispute them as I stand here. But it's not this fiscal year. I assume that's cumulative. Right, that's from 213.
Cumulative, it doesn't matter how many years it is, it's, that's how much we've spent so far.
I have no reason to dispute it.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll move on. Are there any other reports? No. Executive Communications, report of hiring of special counsel, consultants, et cetera.
Mr. President, the report on hiring of special counsel, consultants, et cetera, has been distributed to the members of the council by the law department. Obviously, there's been a chance to review it already. There are two requests to be continued in service. The first request comes from Assistant Fire Chief Bernard Patnod, who, in anticipation of his 55th birthday, requests to be continued in service for one year, and we have received documentation evidencing his qualification to be continued in service and would recommend approval.
Motion to approve. Motion made to approve, and it's a second, under discussion. Any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Mr. President, I saw a request from Deputy Fire Chief David DeMayo, who is anticipating reaching his 56th birthday and is requesting to be continued in service. Have received documentation demonstrating that he's eligible, and put the question to the council to approve.
Motion made, second, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
And finally, Mr. President, I have a request from Fire Captain Timothy McCarthy to be placed on the pension rolls of the city pension system. I've confirmed with the fire chief, he has more than 31 years in service with the Cranston Fire Department, and I put the question to the council for approval.
Motion to approve. Motion made, and second, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coop. Council President, Communications. I believe the last, this continued from February, I've asked the administration to give us approximate cost of putting sidewalks on Ambrose Street. Has the administration come up with a possible cost?
Yes, the administration came up with a possible cost.
Oh, good, could you share that with us?
Sidewalks on Ambrose Street, as you know, are part of a Safe Foods to School project, and it's for the Weston Hills School, the estimated cost is $380,000. The project is currently being fully funded by Rhode Island Department of Transportation with a scheduled advertisement for bid in the fall of 2017.
2017. Mr. Barone, congratulations, occasionally you do good work.
Occasionally?
I don't want to give you a big head.
Occasionally, he says, I'm glad he's back.
Moving on, the Cranston Ice Rink. Administrative report, I, Mr. Coop, I, um, Mr. Coop had said that he was having a mold check. Can anybody find out about the mold?
Actually, Council President, you were kind enough to send me a list of about 12 items, and I wanted to respond on all 12.
I think the important thing is, the most important item there was the mold.
Well, I can skip to that number. That was your number two. The, uh, the black substance on the roof or wall, could be dust or mildew, could be mold, but we think it's probably mildew, was slated as a spring and summer project once the winter season ended, which is March 31st, 2016. A test was conducted by a company, EnviroClean, on Tuesday, March 22nd. They told us that we would have to wait approximately a week for the results. Once I get the results, I'll be addressing the problem, and also, I'll be notifying you, Council President, of that result.
Oh, thank you, I appreciate that. Why don't we go through the other items?
Okay. The, the, in terms of the debris, the debris that was around the rink has since been picked up. My manager there was not aware of any glass, but he did know that the lots were dirty from the winter months, and we had one of the city's, I believe, sweepers come in to sweep up all the dirt and things that have accumulated over the winter. The rubber mats, last year, we put in about $12,000 of new rubber mats. We intended as part of our maintenance this year to do stage two. We currently have, uh, receiving quotes out there, and we're gonna be finishing that project. The only frost heaves that are near the door to enter the ice surface, those have been there, which was reported to me, for 46 years, and are regularly chipped out. And the manager personally has done this numerous times. The only ice patches on the floor are in an area that is an employee-only area. This area has had ice buildup since the rink was open in 1970. We try to keep a fan running to keep area ice from building up. Ice covering the pipe system, I believe he's talking about the compressor room, and his comment is that is normal. A bolt that an employee had that he was trying to help out because of, the person was moving, he will be moving that out this week. It also was in back where it was not visible. You had to, have to almost look for it. I went there Saturday on the 24th, I didn't even see where this unit was. The broken toilet in the rear of the building, which was behind the Junior Fryer's trailer, was not noticeable to the public, but was there and put there by an employee for spare parts in case we needed any parts for some of the toilets. The storage container for propane has, now has a lock, and we will be much more diligent in making sure it's kept locked at all times. The barrels thrown above in the rear parking lot, these are barrels that are set up to keep patrons from parking in the back of the arena. However, some coaches and some parents have taken it upon themselves to move these barrels without permission. They are now put back into place, and they need to remain there. And we wish that the people would follow the rules. Two Zambonis that are in the back, we have now put into the bubble arena, because the bubble is now closed. And we are looking to see about, if we can use the pots from one for the other, so we can have a third Zamboni as a backup for the two Zambonis. We have one semi-new one, and we're getting another one very shortly. It should be here by the end of March. And finally, all the cash transactions at the arena have a system. Every patient, patron who shows up to participate in public skate, public hockey, stick and puck, parent, child are required to sign a waiver and is charged the correct amount. This is a sheet that has every person's name with the money that's collected. This money is then brought into a safe, the manager reconciles this. It is then brought from the safe to my office, I reconcile it. It is then brought down to treasury, and they reconcile it. So there's an accountability of all our cash. And there is sheets that I can provide, anyone that wants to come in and see the process, I'd be happy to show the process, and we keep that in auditing. And, um, overall, the cash that we bring in is roughly 10 to 11% of the total revenue that the city generates for the ice rink. And it's roughly, last year was about $60,000,000, and this year, it's about $72,000,000. So, uh, those are my replies. I have some other, can I go on to some other things?
Well, let's stick on this one, something else, or are we just...
No, I mean, I went through all 12.
All right. I want to ask you one question, though.
Yep.
The open ice, they sign a book saying that they're liable, and here's the $5. So you count the names in the book, and you count the money?
Correct.
And they have to be reconciled?
Correct.
How about the people who don't sign the book?
I'm not aware of anyone that does.
Well, if I bring in a couple of affidavits from people who have never signed the book, would you consider changing the system?
What would you change it to?
A system that actually...
If you have tickets, even a register, if someone doesn't come in and pay, and say someone allows them to come in, you're gonna have the same issue. What is the difference?
Well, the difference is it's a little bit more accountable.
No, it's not, because if someone comes in, and I come in with my son, and there's two of us, and we want to have public skating, and it's $10, I give that person $10, and I have to sign my name and my son's name.
Now, how about if you give that person $5 and just sign one name?
Well, I mean...
The other kid goes free, right?
Yes, he would.
That's one example.
But that's not something that I believe is happening. I like to, if you're gonna say that, you better have proof about that.
If... I've been in order for 30 years, and that's about the worst system I've ever seen. And I don't think anybody who's had any kind of financial experience would agree that you have a good system there. It's a Mickey Mouse system.
Every dollar is accounted for.
And for you to defend it, it's insulting.
It is accounted for every dollar that comes through. If someone comes in and someone lets them in, I don't care what the system is, you're not gonna have a record of it. And we rely on people that work there. We have one full-time manager and two key other people that are part-timers. And you are stating that, you're questioning their credibility, and I have an issue with that.
I'm questioning the credibility of the system, not them. I've never accused anybody of anything. The system stinks, in plain English. You know it, I know it.
No, I don't.
Well, you say you don't know it, but you do know it.
No, I don't. For you to say in the paper that there could be larceny, that's a strong statement, and I got a problem with that.
You should have a problem with it.
Yeah, because it's not accurate. The other thing I want to mention, if I have time, if you allow me, Dave Bucci is the only qualified person to manage that ice rink. When we gave the bid to Edgewood, they, it was in the bid that they had to have a person that had experience operating a rink. He managed the rink five years under the former management company, Northeast Facility, and the last two years for the city of Cranston. If they had not put his name in that bid package that they submitted, they would have been disqualified to even receive a bid award. I think that's very important to be pointed out. And, um, he does an exceptional job there day-to-day. And every year, if the place is that deplorable, which was stated by Edgewood, then why do they want more and more ice time every year compared to the prior year? How deplorable can the facility be if they want to monopolize the arena? And the other thing is, with the issues presented at the March 17 Finance Committee meeting, most of these could have been resolved without any political grandstanding if they were brought to the attention of myself or Mr. Bucci. As you can see, many things got resolved immediately. And the only people that seemed to be complaining about the rink were all Edgewood Youth Hockey Club members. And Director Coop went over there the next morning on a Friday, I went there on a Saturday, and believe me, the place is not deplorable. And I've received, well, actually, the mayor received three emails from three different organizations commending Mr. Bucci and the rink. And I think that's, bodes well for the operation that's going on there. And in 17 years, in the last two years are the only years that that rink is run in the black.
Okay. He said, it's a council member communications... He said, let's say, Councilmember Communications, Councilman Santa Maria.
Thank you, Council President. The traffic report from the administration on Phoenix Avenue, a couple of other council people have asked on that, so I'm going to let them ask that. I won't, I'll just take that off of my communication list. I think Council, Majority Leader Arquetteo and Councilman Osito both asked, so it would be kind of redundant if I, we asked three times, so I'll leave that to them. The overnight parking of trucks at Walmart, I just have to, I talked to Councilman Pat Louskas about this during one of the breaks. I went there Saturday, and I took pictures of the two dumpsters. TVs, mattresses piled up in front of it. There's litter all over the parking lot. There were two trucks there still, ongoing, still trucks parked there overnight. I took the pictures on a Saturday, went back Sunday morning, and miraculously, at Easter miracle, everything was gone. I don't know if they saw me taking the pictures or what, but it was amazing, which leads me to my next point. I think I'm going to go there once a week and take pictures, and I can get that place cleaned up without even doing anything other than taking pictures. So I don't know if the administration had someone go over there on a Sunday and do it, or what happened? I mean, it's a miracle, Council President, an absolute miracle.
All right, Council, Councilwoman Stachos, leaders in Amelie.
I'm good. I just have to ask one other question. Budlong Road, no, but I can add stuff to my council communications, right? Budlong Road, there was a guy out there Saturday with a spray can, a paint spray can on a Saturday, doing an imitation of Picasso on Budlong Road. All he had to do was add the red and the white, and it would look like a flag. So what's going on on Budlong Road? There are white lines, there are blue lines, there are orange lines on the sidewalk. So I was just wondering if they could give me a date on what's going on on Budlong Road.
There's a party going on.
I was just thinking, I was thinking if we added the Italian flag colors, we could reroute the parade down Budlong Road if we had to. That's, the guy was going nuts. He was in the middle of the road, Jeff, with no policeman or anything, just having a fine time with Budlong Road.
Was he like a utility guy or just some guy?
Well, that's what bothers me. These are our roads. The administration should know what's going on.
Well, if it's just some guy...
Okay, I'll check into it.
911, there's a guy on the street making shit.
Yeah. I mean, anyway, if they're doing something, fine, but I would like, maybe I think the council should know. I think all of us, especially the at large, because, you know, that is our wood. I don't know, the whites, water boos, they all have different coats. Anyway, if I could get an update on Director Budlong...
I can let you know if any utility work is going on, but I can't tell you if a guy decided to empty a can of spray paint, so.
Well, he had a Providence Water Truck, so I will say he had a...
I am good, Mr. President.
But I'm not that...
That's what I said.
And the Walmart thing, I figured out how to handle it, so.
Keep taking your pictures.
Just need to get my pictures. Thank you.
Can you tell me where on Budlong Road?
From Park to Dean Parkway, pretty much.
So he walked up the whole street?
Well, he didn't walk. He was in a, he was in the middle of the road with no police detail, but he did have a blue spray can, and he had a Providence Water Truck. So I'm assuming it's Providence Water.
So, okay, I asked you if it was a utility.
What was a utility?
So Providence Water.
I guess. You would know that better than I would.
And it's the entire street from Park Avenue to Dean Parkway.
Pretty much, okay. You'll see it. And there's orange on the sidewalks. I don't know what utility orange is.
Away from my area. Councilwoman Stachos.
I don't think I can equal that. The equal time.
Okay, that's, that, okay. Let's keep moving, because we're going to be at the...
Looking for an update on the trail application?
Yes, I'm going to read an email that you received, because that's the last update.
What was the date on that?
March 21st.
Okay.
Now, Mr. Lapola just got back from vacation today. They are going to the site this week to ensure flagging is all in place for the DEM visit. So that's going to happen this week.
Okay, thank you.
Can I follow up on that, Mr. Council?
I wonder if Councilman Santa Maria said it in Ovina, if it would happen more quickly?
Maybe by next Easter. I could get the pick out of a can of blue spray paint.
Councilman Osito and Councilman Arquetteo.
Director Barone, there's a rumor floating around out there that the solar panel, that are going, those solar panels are going to be built, that they're going to try to put high voltage power lines pretty close to that trail. Would you be able to help me out and just maybe give them a call and see what's going on with those?
Sure.
Thank you.
Councilman Arquetteo. I actually think I can answer that question. Do you know that, you know the answer to the question?
Great, you can refresh my memory.
Well, I'll send you an email, then you'll know, but basically they say...
Rest of the council members might want to know.
Sure. So I'll send everybody an email right now.
So I don't need to do that?
Well, I'll send them the email, then maybe by the end of the meeting, they'll have another job for you, other than the blue paint.
As long as it's, as long as it's on the agenda.
Councilman Arquetteo.
Thank you, Press, Council President. Yeah, I've got three issues. One, Elwin Street, and it's mistyped here. That's not the reason why I put Elwin Street on there. My, Elwin's a dead end, so it can't be a cut-through, but it's a dead-end street that has access to Gladstone, and there's tremendous amount of litter at the end of that street in between the fence and the guardrail. The neighbors have been complaining, so you could send someone from, you know, Public Works, or you can contact the school and have a custodian. I don't know if the custodians are going to do that, I don't know, but just bottles, water bottles, tin cans, things like that. The next issue is Councilman Osito's, because I didn't put that there, so I'll let Councilman Osito address that, on Phoenix Avenue. Then I would like to mention Gladstone Street. The fence has a break in it. As you go down the hill, and they're dumping tires and other debris on the hill there off of Gladstone Street.
You could send me an email so I could follow up.
I will send you an email. On Elwin too, you want me to send you the both?
Please, please.
And also, the last is Citizens Bank relocation to the city of Johnston. I was just through the chair to the administration. Did that come as a complete surprise? And if so, was there anything that our economic developments are could have done to prevent the relocation of the branch at Citizens Bank?
No, Councilman, that did not come as a surprise.
So that, we knew that, the administration was aware.
The administration was aware that Citizens was looking to build some sort of corporate campus in Rhode Island. In fact, Mayor Fong, our economic development director, and I met with a representative, proposed some possible sites in Cranston that we hoped would be attractive. They were looking for, as we ultimately learned, an undeveloped piece of property, a large undeveloped piece of property where they could build from the ground up. Unfortunately, we don't have large undeveloped parcels in Cranston available. We had a couple of sites. They would have required redevelopment, and it appears that they were not looking to get into a redevelopment situation, and they selected a virgin site for a brand-new development.
Was there any enticement the city could have given the company as far as issuing tax breaks or something of that nature?
Yeah, I think ultimately it would have come down to the city acquiring a large parcel of undeveloped land, perhaps some large parcel out in western Cranston, but of course, that didn't have the infrastructure, the roads that they were looking for. They obviously were looking for something close to the highway. I think the...
I want to interrupt you. If you come to Ward 3, and you know where the police station is, right across the police station, used to be the old Mew Barn there, there's acres that have been knocked down, it's right access to Route 10, access to 95, 195. So there are open areas, I think, still in our city if we utilize the time to look and to see what's going on, so.
Yeah, well aware of that.
So you're telling me there's no open space for a company to build? I find that hard to believe, but thank you.
Councilman Santa Maria.
Just follow up on that. Director Coop, did they ask for any tax break or tax incentive to Cranston?
That conversation never happened. The conversation was, these are some sites you should look at, and I can assure you, I'm well aware of the parcel over by Route 10 and the police station. And the first question was, is there a site that you're interested in? And had we been able to provide such a site, then we would have gotten into that conversation as a follow-up.
So they didn't give you any inkling that they were going to ask for any type of enticement or incentive?
Not in that conversation, no.
Thank you.
Councilman Osito.
I was just going to follow up on the accidents at Phoenix, near that Stop &amp; Shop, Director. Have there been a lot over the years, or is this, I recall, it's been a while.
I had a report run by the Cranston Police Department from March 23, 2011, to March 23, 2016, and that between Atwood Avenue and Cornell Street, and it does not include the intersection of Atwood Avenue and Phoenix Avenue. It's, it's, it's Phoenix and Cornell. I'm sorry, Atwood and Cornell. There were 15 non-injury accidents involving vehicles either entering from Burger King or entering from Stop &amp; Shop.
Right. I mean, that's...
There were two non-injury accidents at Cornell, and one pedestrian accident at Phoenix at the crosswalk between Stop &amp; Shop and Burger King.
Which was the recent one?
That's correct. And so one accident, one pedestrian accident in the last five years.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Councilman Pavecchio.
Thank you, Council President. The status on Capuano, I don't know if Mr. Coop has anything, or Mr. Barone. Any update on the negotiations on Capuano?
No, we're still waiting to hear from the bank. We did get a, we did get a report back from building inspections. The entire building, building needs to be gutted, right down to the studs, and studs need to be replaced. It is in a floodplain zone, but we would do a study to see the elevation. The house itself may not be in the floodplain, the land may be, so that would be kind of an easy sell. But we've never heard back from the bank to see what their plans are. So we're continuing to assess the fines on a daily basis as the ordinance requires until something can be done.
Yeah, and I know that, just as a refresher, this property was tied up in a lawsuit that was handled in the federal courts for many years, so there was some justification for the delay, even though we're, you know, we had no, there was nothing we could do, I don't believe, as a city, unfortunately. I didn't know that till about three, four months ago, but I'm aware of that lawsuit that tied up the titles to many properties that were foreclosed, so, but hopefully, Mr. Marcela can do something with it.
Well, we are, we are planning, if we do inherit the house, we probably would demolish it. It would be cheaper to demolish it and then sell the land to whoever wants it to rebuild.
Okay. And my second issue was Dean Parkway and Machanacit Valley Parkway. As you go up Budlong to Dean...
I know exactly where that is. I got two calls on it last week.
Get to the top there, this, I'm not looking for a, you know, a stop sign or anything or another stop sign, but some kind of a warning to, for people to use a directional signal or something was mentioned.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know... You know as well as I do, signs don't work. But I'm going out there on Wednesday with Ken Mason, and we're going to be looking at it. One of the things that I recommend is putting a stop sign coming up Machanacit, and if you're going to take the right onto Budlong, there's no stop sign. You can, you don't, there's no need to stop. But if you're making a left to go to Dean, you have to stop because the traffic coming up Budlong has the right of way. So if we can make some type of indication where if you're going to make a left-hand turn here, you have to stop. So that would be like left turn, stop. And that's my thinking, I mean, that's what I noticed when I visited the site, because that's the only time you have to stop, when you're coming from Garden City going up, and I want to go down Dean Parkway, I have to stop to make the left because traffic coming up Budlong has the right of way.
Right, and but people don't stop sometimes. They take the left while the people are going straight up coming up the hill. They don't need a directional signal.
So, I mean, again, we can put 14 stop signs over there, and people still don't stop. So, but, but I did receive complaints on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. I listed three items on here. It's all regarding litter. Maybe next time when the crews are in the area, if they can just pay some special attention to Machanacit Park, Cranston High School West Parking Lot, and the Randall Street area. That's all. Thank you.
Machanacit Park, State Park. Usually, there's a neighborhood association that cleans that, and they get a grant from the state. So, you know, I mean, I could reach out to the schools about the parking lot, you know, this is not, we don't clean schools. The city doesn't clean schools, but I can reach out to the school department and have them do it. And again, the brush along Randall Pond, I could have somebody do that.
Thank you.
Anybody else? The pressure issue on Randall's Pond, on Kingwood, that's all wetland, so you've got a problem over there. You can't really go...
We would, we usually clean all of the land.
Oh, okay, just want to make sure.
The wetlands getting bigger and bigger, though.
Thanks for the heads up, Council President. You won't want to fall in the water.
No, I wouldn't watch it get all wet.
We could put up a blue line.
Old business. Introduction of new business. Any old business?
There's no old business.
Thank you. Introduction of new business.
New business. Proposed ordinance 4-1601, amendment of Title 10, Chapter 32, the city of Cranston, entitled "Motor Vehicles and Traffic Stop at Comstock Parkway at Horizon Drive." To be referred to ordinance committee for hearing on April 14. Proposed ordinance 4-1602, amendment of Chapter 17 of the code of the city of Cranston, entitled "Zoning, 950 Phoenix Avenue," to be referred to ordinance for hearing on May 12. Resolution supportive legislation restoring funding for the state aid to libraries to the full 25% to be referred to ordinance for hearing on April 14. I'm sorry, to finance. Resolution authorizing the purchase of street lights, the conversion of fixtures to lighting emitting LED technology and financing through a lease purchase agreement and authorizing the execution and delivery of a lease purchase agreement and related instruments and determining other matters in connection therewith to be referred to finance for hearing on April 14. Coastway Plaza, petition for a street name change to Capital Way, to be referred to Public Works for hearing on April 4. The following two petitions from National Grid also to be referred to Public Works on April 4 for a pole location on Broad Street and one on Payne Avenue. The following new claims that are listed on the docket to be referred to claims for hearing... hearing on April 4. Would the council like me to read them all?
No.
Thank you. Misland use business, the resolution on Gladstone. Oh, I'm sorry, we need to vote on the new business.
Second. Most remain second. No discussion, thank you. Please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Okay, on Miss Land Use Business, the matter listed on the resolution for the traffic safety report on Gladstone, that was provided last month and should have been removed. The labor's contract, we've received the executed copy, and the fire contract is being reviewed by administration to make sure that no pages were surreptitiously inserted into the signed contract, from what I understand.
Okay. The next council meeting is Monday, April 25. Is there a motion to adjourn and go back into executive session?
Motion to adjourn and go back into executive session.
To the administration, to the administration, Mr. Coop?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Sosha has been sitting here all this time. Would you object to having come into executive session to answer a few questions?
It's been a while.
Mr. Sosha, would you mind coming to executive session with us?
I mean... Yeah, I don't think I would. I'm too tired now. I don't know. Is it graffiti? Is it nice graffiti? I'll get some.